Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Before we get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and all, I just want to set the schedule for tonight because it's a little different than what we usually do. We are going to have interviews to replace Susan Leonard's position. We're going to interview four people tonight. Then we are going to have nominations. And then, public comment on those nominations will be allowed. And we ask any audience member that wants to comment to please remember to keep the comments brief, and three minutes is, I think, what we're going to set it at. Then, after we have our vote, we will go on to the rest of the agenda. And then, we will have another public comment after that's over, for anybody else who might want to say something about tonight's meeting. Okay? So, should we do the Pledge of Allegiance and then...
Words.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Luborowski, can you bring in the first interviewee, please? Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. Mrs. Lupo. Can you come up to the podium, please? Yes. So, just so you know the format, each candidate can have a two-minute opening statement. And then, the president will ask two or three questions. And then, we'll open it up to the rest of the school board members and see if they want to ask anything specific to maybe follow up on any answer that you gave, or something specific to your resume, or something like that. So, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Sounds good. Okay. So, go ahead with your opening statement.
Okay. Let me begin by apologizing if I speak too fast, which I do all the time when I am incredibly nervous, as I am this evening. So, my apologies. Just raise a hand if you need me to slow down. Just to introduce myself, I have two boys that are 12 and 13, who go to school in the North Penn School District. I have lived in the North Penn School District for 11 years. I am a mom. I am a learner. And I am an educator. Professionally, I am a principal in the Wisconsin Higgins School District, our neighbor. I also teach doctoral-level programs, doctoral statistics for Gwinnett Mercy University. Or, Gwinnett Mercy University, sorry. I have two bachelors, two masters, and a doctorate in the field of education. I love learning. I love teaching. I do it purely because I love children and I want to make their experience, their academic experience engaging and involving them and their parents and making them lifelong learners. I do it professionally every day. And for the North Penn, I would like to do it on the other end, trying to make it better for the entire district. Was that two minutes?
That's good.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Great. And please don't be nervous. Although, I know how it feels to be up there at that side of the podium. Okay. So, what do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn School District today?
Challenges? We are a huge district. We have a wide variety of learning styles, socioeconomic levels. Budget is a huge challenge. And then, how to meet those children's needs, instructionally, is another challenge, I believe, that we have. But on the flip side, I think that's also something that we do very well. I think we are meeting all of those children's needs as best that we can at this point. Should we always look for more resources and different ways to do it? Of course. Are we doing a pretty good job with our budget? Absolutely. Are there things that need to be changed? Of course. Always. It's always a work in progress. So, I think what our strengths are could also be what our weaknesses are. There's always something in between as well. We just have to keep working on it across the board for children.
Thank you. Okay. What do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn School District over the next five years?
Budget is always an issue across the board for every school district. Benefits, retirement. I know that on our end, as a district, you have to contribute more to the retirement. And that's very difficult. You have to keep the grounds so much more current and so much safe with technology and everything else. How do you do all that without necessarily raising taxes? That's always a challenge. But the strengths continue to be... You're rated number 15. That's fantastic. It's amazing. You hire fantastic teachers. You continue to give them professional development. How do you continue to do that? That's going to be a challenge for the next five years. Instruction changes every day. These children are studying for jobs that don't even exist yet. How do we continue to make sure they're prepared?
Okay. And I guess to follow up on that, too. What are the biggest challenges facing public education, in your opinion, in general?
The whole system. Quite honestly. I mean, and that's just as an educator. PSSAs are difficult. We get rated in different ways that are very difficult. How do we rate our teachers? How do we get funding from the state? We never know what the budget's going to be at any given time. That could change every year. How do we budget for that? You never know who's taking charge after an election and how is that going to change the laws for us? It's kind of like, you know, we fly by the seat of our pants a lot of times. But we always do what's best for children. That's what we always need to focus on.
Thank you. So, I'll open it up to the rest of the school board. Does anybody else want to... Mr. Fosca?
Hi. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Sure.
So, for those of us, all of us basically sitting behind this table who actually ran and had to come up with a platform, I'm curious to know, what is the one issue that you think, specific to North Penn, that you would like to see addressed if you were to be on the board?
Just based on my background, it would be effective instructional practices, making sure that we are strategically instructing the children and academic achievement. Are we showing a year of growth for all of our children? Not necessarily test scores, but are children showing a year of growth academically?
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Giorgio? Oh, Mr. Casa.
Thank you for your time and for volunteering for this position. Just wondering, what's... What is your vision for how a school board should function, in particular, as it relates to North Penn School District and the history that you're aware of?
As a team? As a team, we don't necessarily always have to agree, but we always need to keep our focus on what is best for children and our community. That's kind of the bottom line. No matter what we're trying, what decision we're trying to make, it always needs to be, is that the best thing for children? Is that the best thing for our community? At the end of the day, that's what we're all here for. Our children, our community, our taxpayers. Is our decision going to be what's best for all of them? We don't necessarily have to agree, but we've got to come to a compromise, something that will be best for all of them.
Yep.
Hi. Thank you. A little bit of a follow-up to that. How do you know when to compromise? You want to stand your ground up to what you want. But how do you know, for you, when you're working in those kind of situations, when is the time for you that you know that it's time to not do that anymore?
Just an example is when I'm running my building, there's X amount of dollars left. And I can either get new blinds in the building or I can buy X amount of books. Well, got to get the blinds because the blinds aren't working right now at all. And if we don't get them, we can't stay safe in the building. I've got to push it. I've got to give up at that point and compromise, where maybe I can buy these blinds and still get this amount of books. But in my heart, I'd want to get all the books. But I can't. I've got to make sure the children are safe. So, just take into consideration all the details.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
What's your observation about how student behavior has changed over the course of your career and how it has impacted readiness to learn, particularly with young elementary school students? And how has that impacted our system? And what strategies would you support? Or what strategies have you seen work in terms of how to best address that?
Children are very different learners than they were when we were kids. There's so many different factors now and facets that impact children's lives. It really depends on each individual child. What is going on in their life? What baggage do they have when they walk through the door? When a child misbehaves, there's something that caused that. It's not just a, "You did this. Here's your consequence." There has to be a conversation of, "You did this. It's not a good choice. But help me understand what made you do that? What set you off to the point that you had this choice, that you had this behavior?" And analyzing it and bringing it down to what pushed this child to that point. Then, we can start managing the behaviors. What was the catalyst? Then, we can break it down. Different behavior charts. We use a lot of self-rematch, where the child analyzes their own behavior. You have to hold them responsible for their own behavior. It's not just you talk at someone. You talk with someone. "Let's go through this together." And you can do that as early as kindergarten. Absolutely. I mean, you're not having in-depth conversation, but you can say like, "Should you have thrown that pencil at me?" You know, and talk it through. It has to be very much interaction. It can't just be at someone in terms of behaviors. But there's a lot going on in people's lives. You've got to figure out what it is.
Does parent engagement play a part of that? And if so, how... What's the best way to encourage that when everybody has so much to do today?
Parent engagement is huge. You have to get parent engagement and parent involvement. Sometimes, it's just a phone call that says something nice to the parent. You know, a lot of times, parents see a phone ring and you're kind of like, "Oh, dear Lord. What did my child do today?" And if they hear a, "You know, I just wanted to call you to tell you your child held the door for someone today. And that was pretty fantastic." The positive input, opening the communication, having parents realize that, "You know what? You can call me if you had to have your pet put down this weekend because I know that's going to upset your child. Let me know so I can touch base with your kid this week." Making sure parents are aware of that completely open line of communication. That's huge. And that helps. It really does.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lupo.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Oh. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Do you need me again?
Mr. Giorgio just corrected me. He said it was Dr. Lupo. Sorry.
Thanks. No big deal.
Oh. I'm late. Hello, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Rup. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. So, the format tonight, you'll be allowed to have a two-minute opening statement.
Okay.
And then, I'm going to ask like three, four questions. And then, we're going to open it up to the rest of the board. And they will ask you questions like, based on your resume, or maybe a follow-up answer to a question that you already answered. Okay? So, if you want to start, the opening statement should be about two minutes.
Okay. Sounds good. So, just in the way of introduction, my name is Michelle Rup. I am a veterinarian. I have lived in the area approximately 20 years. Have been a resident of North Penn School District consistently for the last 12 years. I have a 12-year-old daughter in the district who has some learning differences and has been quite successful in the inclusion classrooms in the district. I decided to run because I've got a really broad background of experiences. I spent roughly 10 years in the pharmaceutical industry. So, I'm not just a veterinarian. I've had a lot of management experience. I'm a lifelong learner. I started out in public school in a small community, went to Penn State, finished up with my vet school at the University of Pennsylvania. And since then, I've continued to study where there were needs and gaps in my education. So, while I was in the pharmaceutical industry, there were areas that I wanted to learn a little bit more. And so, I pursued some studies there. I've developed some interest in education. And as a way to support my daughter, took some classes at Arcadia, looked at doing a master's in special education. So, I've worked on capital projects when I was in the pharmaceutical industry. I've managed staff. I've worked with union staff. I've dealt with grievances. So, I have a really broad experience base. And, you know what? I have a student in the district. I ran in the most recent election. So, I've gotten a lot of exposure to a lot of different areas. And I can bring a lot to the table. The biggest reason that I decided to run, actually, is because of my daughter. And it has absolutely nothing to do with her special needs. She developed an interest in politics during the last election and was interested, followed both sides of the election, was very interested, watches the news, and wanted to learn more about it. So, this was a fabulous opportunity for me to teach her about local politics. So, she was right there in the mix with us during the election. She got to learn a lot, got to see a lot firsthand. And I'm standing here tonight because it's really important for her to see that we need to follow things through to completion. I guess that's my timer.
Yeah. Sorry. Can't turn it off. Thanks. Sorry. Okay. So, what are the... What do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn School District today?
So, challenges? I made actually a list of some things. So, let me just pull those up. Let's see. So, strengths? I mean, clearly, you know, we're doing well. If you look at niche.com, you can really see how well we're doing. So, we're the number three district in Montgomery County. We're ranked 11 in the state of Pennsylvania out of 497 schools. We're the 29th-best district to teach in Pennsylvania. And we're the 29th-most diverse district in Pennsylvania out of 497. We've got phenomenal academic programming. We've got languages that most schools don't have. We have nanotechnology. All you have to do is come to board meetings and you can hear about all the wonderful things that are happening in the district. Inclusion has come a long way. It's been a wonderful place. And more families are moving into the district because of the things that we've done with inclusion. So, I think those are some of the really wonderful things about the district. And there's a long list. I could spend a long time talking about that. We don't have time to talk about all that tonight. The challenges? I think one of the most important challenges that we're faced with is, you know, we need to maintain and improve the programs that we have currently, but we also need to remain fiscally responsible. And, you know, all you have to do is listen to what's happening in all the districts. Everybody's struggling with a pension crisis. So, that's a problem everybody's faced with. That's a challenge that we need to think about. One of the challenges in relationship to raising taxes is that we've got a large percentage of our population who are retired and are living on fixed incomes. So, we really need to be cognizant of their needs. We've got ongoing renovation needs. And we've got, you know, if you look at the high school, we've talked about this repeatedly, $120 million at least in renovations that are needed. We've got elementary schools that need renovations. We've talked recently about the air conditioning needs. And we've got a school that we tabled air conditioning for because of renovation needs. So, money is a huge part of the issue. And then, we've got lots of other things that we're committed to in the last election that are going to cost a lot of money. So, I think, you know, everybody, all the districts are kind of facing this challenge. But I think probably one of the largest challenges that the district faces is a financial challenge.
Okay. What do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn over the next five years, the North Penn School District?
Well, I think the things that I talked about, you've got all those renovation challenges that you need to look at. We've got to figure out how to pay for all of those. We've got things that, you know, we're talking about full-day kindergarten. We've talked about, so how do we pay for that? How do we implement it? We'll need construction at some of those schools in order to do those things. So, I think those are the big challenges that we're faced with. They're financial challenges. And that will take five years. Maybe more.
Okay. So, we'll open it up to the other school board members. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Rup? The questions should be towards a person's resume. They don't have to be this team.
Well, actually, I do have a question.
Okay.
It's not the same one. You're very knowledgeable about special education. And your daughter is a success story in our district. You're familiar with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and the law that provides students with what we call FAPE, Free Appropriate Public Education. During the election, we had a few spirited debates about that word. And I'm curious to know, in your experience as a parent, what does that word, "appropriate", knowing that in the law it was left intentionally vague, what does that word mean to you in terms of the appropriateness of the education for a special education student?
Well, I think you have to look at each student. And it's individualized for a reason. So, you need to look at the individual needs of each individual student. So, the needs of my daughter are not necessarily the needs of somebody else's child in the district. And so, we need to figure out what each student needs in order to reach whatever their full potential is. So, for my daughter, we didn't know when she was born. In particular, in her case, she's got a birth defect. She's missing the several million nerves that cross back and forth between the two halves of her brain. She, until recently, was the only student in this district with this disability. And so, she's got a lot of challenges. For us, the big thing that we recognized very early on is that she comprehends a lot of what's going on around her, but she struggles to demonstrate what she's capable of doing. So, in our case, an appropriate education is what challenges her mentally. What comes out of her doesn't necessarily reflect what she's capable of doing. And so, appropriate for her is an academic program that supports her to demonstrate what she understands, but also challenges her mentally. Because I think, you know, you as an educator should know this better than anyone else. When a student is primed to learn and when they really... They're sponges. They want to take everything in. And if you don't challenge them appropriately, they lose it. They give up. They give up on themselves. And so, my vision for my daughter is not necessarily other parents' vision for their children. But my vision is that she is a contributing member of society and she has the potential to do that. So, my expectation is that she'll be able to go out and get a job and keep a roof over her head and that she's not going to have to live on welfare. And I've said, I've sat in IEP meetings and I have said consistently, "I don't know what the future holds for her. I'm not about to define it and neither is anyone else." So, appropriate is, it's a dynamic discussion that's not just what I want and it's not just what the school wants. It's not what the administrators want. It's not what the board wants. It's what is best for her. And she has sat in every IEP meeting from the very beginning and has been part of every discussion. And so, I'm speaking specifically related to my daughter. But what I'm saying is, what's meaningful to me and what I consider appropriate is it's up to the families and the IEP team. It's not for me to define.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Giorgio?
Dr. Rup, you talked a lot about renovations in the challenges aspect of your answer. A lot of the items, as you mentioned, are big-ticket items. Our high school is a big-ticket item. Some of our elementary schools, the extent of work that they need, they're big-ticket items. Those needs don't go away. They have to be addressed.
Yeah.
How do you do it? And I don't expect an exactly precise issue.
Yeah.
What would be your... What would be the principles that would guide you in deciding how to do that? Because in the next couple of years, those items are going to have to get done.
Right. Agreed. And then, there will be ongoing renovations. So, once you finish with that project, you know, the clock starts ticking before you need to do it again. So, we definitely need to plan long-term. So, the challenge for me in answering that is not on the board. So, I don't know all of the ins and outs of a lot of this. I did have the fortune of running on the board and one of my running mates was, you know, sort of our financial guru. So, I got to hear a lot from Frank. And so, you know, I have some ideas from some of the things that he talked about. But I think that we really need to be creative in looking at finances. So, I think when we look at the money that we need to spend, we need to think about, is there something that we can cut somewhere else? Not necessarily remove programs, but can we become more efficient in some of the operations that we do so that we can save money to pay for some of these things? Now, granted, you know, when you're talking $120 million, like, can we really... Can we cut and can we become so efficient that we can come up with that money? Probably not. But I think that there are things that we probably can look at where we can create some efficiencies[1511.74] efficiencies to help to manage some of these ongoing renovation challenges. And then I think we need to look at, you know, what grants are available? What's out there at the, you know, federal, state level? Is there anything at the local level? I don't know what's there at the county level. Or are there opportunities for us to share resources with other districts in the areas? There's something that we can do there to try and help manage some of the costs that we're looking at. I think we really need to be creative and out of the box. And so, and that creativity is something that I definitely bring to the table because of my daughter, I've had to look at things very differently, but also because of what I do for a living. So I'm not just a veterinarian. I'm a veterinarian who does acupuncture and rehabilitative medicine, which is the equivalent of physical therapy. And so I have to look very creatively at what I do when I manage my animals. But also, I work with patients that can't speak and can't tell me what's going on and often the owners don't know what's going on with their animal. So I've had to really be creative throughout my career, across my time in the pharmaceutical industry. I had jobs that they didn't teach me how to do the things that I had to do. I had to be creative and learn and sort of adapt on the fly. And so these are some of the skills that really I can bring to the board and I've got these skills and I want to be able to utilize them. So that's why I ran, that's why I'm following through on this. And for the record, you know, there's a substantial time commitment to being on the board. I recently started a new position. I was actively recruited to start up a rehab program at a hospital about an hour away. And so I was in the process of running when they recruited me for this job. I didn't know what the outcome was going to be. So everybody, you know, always, you don't go into anything expecting you're going to lose, right? So when I negotiated my contract, I actually negotiated in there that I would be available for not just meetings and things that I needed for my daughter, but that if I was to win in my campaign bid, I would be able to adjust my schedule so that I could be available for whatever meetings and whatever I needed to do to actively support this community and the board. And I was granted that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight and especially for the campaign that was hard-fought and really, you know, the quality of education matters, makes all of us better and the community better when we have those type of campaigns. So thank you, Michelle. Appreciate you coming out again tonight. Also appreciating your letter that mentioned a bipartisanship. And how does that, how does your vision of the board moving forward? This is a transformative time for this board in the history of it and the challenges which you grasp well. Do you have some examples of how you see that bipartisanship playing out in your vision for this board moving forward?
You know, really, I think at the end of the day, I don't care if you're a Republican, a Democrat, an independent or whatever. We're all sitting around a table and we're talking about what we need to do to make sure that we're doing the best for our students and our community. And so I don't care about politics. To be perfectly honest with you, I didn't really, politics, they're boring. It's not my thing. I'm not really interested in politics. I really didn't want to run. I did it mostly to teach my daughter a lesson. So I don't get caught up in politics. I will tell you that I'm not a, I'm not a PC person. I'll tell you what I think. So if we're talking about an issue, and I'm not going to be deliberately rude, but if we're talking about an issue and we need to make tough decisions, I'm not going to beat around the bush. I'm going to tell you what I think. And if we disagree, we disagree. But, you know, I think there's something to be said for that honest communication and that willingness to kind of put yourself out there. I mean, really, if you think about it, I put myself out there an awful lot. I went out and went completely out of my comfort zone, knocking on doors and talking to people and doing things that I really didn't want to do. I don't want to be a politician. I don't have an agenda. I have a skill set and ability to do things to help my community and to help the kids. And at the end of the day, that's what's really important.
Thank you. And just my last follow-up to that is I just wanted some specificity for the bipartisanship aspect. Is there one example as to, you know, we had a long campaign, somewhere in those issues where there is compromise that you sense moving forward that, as you said, as a board, it would be apolitical in tackling a tough decision?
Yeah, I mean, I think, so if you want to talk about the issues, so the issues we talked about in the campaign, smaller class size, full-day kindergarten, I don't disagree with them in principle. I don't think they're bad ideas. I think what we need to do is figure out how we're going to do it and how we can do it so we're not unfairly burdening our community members with taxes. You know, we need to think about what we're doing. We need to make sure that we've looked at cost-benefit ratio. And at the end of the day, I mean, we're talking about kids, we're not talking about widgets. So cost-benefit ratio, I'm using as a, you know, as a business term. Sometimes there are things that we have to do because that's the best thing in the interest of the kids, right? But we do need to, we need to be smart about what we're doing. So we can't just say, oh yeah, it sounds really good, let's do it. We need to look, what are the studies? You know, really look at what our administration is saying. Ask their opinion. What do they think is in the best interest of the kids? And then at the end of the day, if, let's say, full-day kindergarten, if we decide that's what we need to do, we need to look at how much it's going to cost and we need to figure out how we're going to do it. We need to talk to other districts that have done it. We need to look at what's the, you know, what's the financial picture? We're looking at all of these financial demands on us right now. So I'm not opposed to it. So I'm not going to sit on the board and say, bleh, you guys wanted full-day kindergarten and I just think that's a bunch of bunk and I'm going to vote against it just to vote against it. That's ridiculous. Really, that's somebody who cares a political agenda. I don't have a political agenda. So I'm going to come into meetings, I'm going to listen to the discussion, I'm going to give my opinion. If you don't like my opinion, you don't like it. But at the end of the day, it is what it is. And at some point, we're going to come to some decision. I mean, you know, if you look at the department or the company that I'm working for right now, we're facing a lot of challenges. I came into a business that had pretty much lost all of their veterinarians. They were bought by a corporation four years ago and everybody jumped ship and nobody managed it. So it's pretty crazy. Like, there's a lot of nonsense that's going on that makes my, sets my hair on fire, right? But so I either quit and give up and run away from the challenge or I find a way to work through it, okay? And this isn't any different, except I'm not getting paid to sit here, right? So I'm volunteering to light my hair on fire, right, on a regular basis for no money. I think that's the definition of insanity. But, you know, really, I mean, seriously, at the end of the day, I don't have to like you, you don't have to like me, we don't have to agree on everything, but we need to sit down and have some sort of dynamic discussion and try to figure out what we're going to do to keep this operation running and to make sure that our kids have the best education possible. And that's really all I care about. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much. Is anyone else? We good? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rob.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Kurian, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you doing?
Good. Okay, so the format that we were having tonight is that you have a two-minute opportunity to give an opening statement. Then I will ask two or three questions and then we'll open it up to the full board to ask questions that are specific to your resume or that are like follow-up questions to an answer that you might have given already.
Sounds good.
Okay? So go ahead with your opening statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me here today. We moved to Lansdale about seven years ago when my daughter was four and the biggest consideration was where my children would go to school. I grew up in Philadelphia, I went to public school in Philadelphia my whole life and I knew my children would go to public school also. And the school that we, that I attended as an elementary school was great, but I didn't know what would happen as we went to middle school and high school. And so when we decided to choose between Central Bucks, between Council Rock, anywhere else, we chose Lansdale because we wanted somewhere that had a great school district and was good for families and embraced diversity. And I found that North Penn does all those things. And I've also found that the school board has done a good job. I'm happy with where my children go to school. I have three children in the school district and they'll be there for another, my youngest one will be there for another 11 years. So I'm vested in the school district and I want to make sure that I help continue that tradition and make other folks who want to come to North Penn increase their property value by having a great school district and make sure that our teachers are well taken care of. My kids and our kids are happy to go to school here and have the resources they have here. So in any way I can help, I'm happy to do that. I've been involved with public service since, I guess for the last 16 years and I believe that I can continue doing that here today. So thank you for this opportunity. I had a chance to meet the other three folks running for this position and they're all, my brief talks with them seem like great people. So I believe it's going to be a win-win situation for the school district and for the parents and the kids of this, for North Penn. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so what do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn School District today?
So the strength and the challenge is still, I think, somewhat related. The population of North Penn has continued to change in a positive way, I think, with diversity, which is not always easy for everyone to embrace. And, you know, my wife is a school teacher and she substitutes all throughout North Penn and now is in Quakertown. And she also said, hey, one of the reasons we like North Penn so much and she likes working for working here was that diversity. But that's a tough thing to embrace sometimes and I believe that we need to focus on that. So I believe it's the same, it's the same thing, which, that problem we have sometimes with diversity is also our strength and if we go forward with that goal in mind, it's better for the school board.
What do you see as the strengths and challenges facing North Penn School District over the next five years?
Well, the strength, I think, are the people who are in this area, in this neighborhood. I see that when I go to my children's school, there are a ton of people who are volunteering. There's never a shortage of parents who are willing to be chaperones, who are willing to be involved at the home and school. Folks who are not paid coming and sitting out here on weeknights every week, every month. Folks who are from the community who are willing to come and do that. And that is the strength, or the people are the strength. The problems we'll face is going to be what happens throughout our area, which is going to be, is the funding that's necessary for the school to keep going strong going to be there without taxes being raised or other things. And that's going to be a problem we'll, I assume that you folks have dealt with already and that we'll deal with as we go forward, is funding. So, but I believe that it's worked well so far and the people that make up this community will help go through that.
What qualifications do you bring to the board?
That's a fair question. I tried to be a steward in the things I do in life. I went to, went to college on a scholarship. I went to law school through loans and as I said, I've worked in the public sector for a long time. And there have been other opportunities to do things that might not have been, that might have been more glamorous or maybe a bigger house, but I think we need to be stewards of what we have. And sometimes it's harder to say, hey, I'm willing to help put the chairs away at the end of the night than being in the front of the room. And I don't have a problem putting those chairs away at the end of the night. When my kids have music programs, that's sometimes my job. So, you know, if you folks need somebody to help you do that, I'm the person for that.
Thank you. So we'll open it up to the rest of the board. Does anybody want to ask a question?
Don't all jump at once, you know?
Yes, okay. Go ahead, John.
You just mentioned a little bit about your involvement as far as your kids' education and being involved in schools. Can you talk a little more about that? What is your experience in the schools? What have you seen? What have you helped out with, things like that?
So whenever, my wife actually gets to play more of the helping role, but I've been a chaperone, I've been part of the cleanup, I've been part of the spirit volunteer, those kind of things. If, as I said, if it's a matter of, you know, standing outside the post office with the kids to raise a few funds or, you know, putting the trash out at the end of the night, those are a few of the things I've done. Cleaning up when the kids have, you know, the block party at the school, things of that nature. It's been very trivial, very minimal, but, you know, I enjoy being with my kids, I enjoy being around them and I want to make sure they're in an environment where that continues. Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Giazzio.
Thank you for volunteering and offering to help out the school district. Just wondering what your vision is for the role of a school board director and how that relates to your larger vision for how North Penn School District's school board should operate?
So probably assume that everyone here wants the children to do well. And so the director's job and the school board's job is to make sure that education is there, that experience is there. And education is not just what you learn from the blackboard or the whiteboard or the SMARTboard, it's what you learn among your peers, it's what you learn after school, it's what you learn at aftercare. One of the children here I see tonight, she's in early care with, she was in early care with my children. And it's good to have that kind of interaction to make sure it's well-rounded. And so this director of the board, the school board's job, and I guess it sounds trite, is just to make sure that the children are well-rounded all the way through. My vision is for North Penn to continue climbing up in the ranks of our school standings. I've noticed in the last few years, when we moved in, we were in the lower tier, not lower tier, but, you know, in the top 100, but still towards the bottom of the 100. And now we're at number 50 according to the US News rankings. So one day I hope to be in the top 25 and then, you know, move on up. Because that's not just good for the people who are in, who are parents, but it's also good for the other folks who live in the community, for their school to do well. Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fusco?
Yes, thank you. You had mentioned diversity a few times in your statement. And I'm curious, you had said that we should, you know, focus on it and you felt that we were doing some things well. In your estimation as a parent, what do you feel we're doing well here in terms of diversity and outreach to some of our minority students? And what could we be doing better in your estimation?
So the diversity is not just in the minority, which I think is wonderful, you know. When my wife goes to different schools, she tells me the makeup is well-rounded, but I also see that the diversity is children of different backgrounds, children of different educational needs who are not separated. When I was in high school and in middle school, the children with special needs were separated completely. I didn't have any interaction with those children and I don't think that's right. My children should know to be able to be with everyone. And I think North Penn does a good job of that. You know, the children who need the special needs, they get that, but they also get, are also part of a regular classroom. The children who are with minorities and things of that nature, when we do the Olympic Day, when we do all the other activities, it's not just all the other countries involved. Olympic Day involves, you know, you could be on Team India, you could be on Team Syria, you could be on Team whatever. So that's all positive things that our educators are doing and are doing well.
The second question was, what could we improve upon? During the campaign, we had heard from some constituents and some community members that felt there were areas where we needed to make some improvements in the district. Do you see any areas that you feel need to be addressed?
Absolutely. One of the things, when you asked about diversity, is people say, hey, how do I get my opinion forward? How do I get my views forward? Does the person who is representing me look like me? And those kind of things also help. Sometimes it's easier for somebody who's lived outside, who has not lived in Lansdale for all their life to say, oh, well, I'm from South Philly, how my or my kids fit in here? I'll say, hey, I'm from Philadelphia. Or I worked at the DA's office in Philadelphia for a long time. I've been all over the city. Someone might say, hey, I'm an immigrant. I'm an immigrant, you know. I've lived in a few different countries in my life. Someone might say, hey, you know, I work in a factory, you know. My parents have worked in a factory their whole life. So those are all things that we have a common experience with. And I don't know the background of all the folks here, but some of you folks also have that same common experience or else the folks who voted you in would not have done that. So, you know, by having somebody to relate to, I believe, is a good step in the right direction.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurian. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Back to being sequestered?
Yes, please.
All right. They give me a big room by myself.
Hello.
Hi, how are you, Mrs. Remich? So the format tonight is that each candidate is given two minutes for an opening statement. Then I ask two or three questions and then we open it up to the rest of the board and they are able to ask you questions that will be based either on your resume and letter that you sent in or on maybe a follow-up to a question that you've already answered.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay? So you can go ahead with your statement.
Great. My name is Julianne Romich and I have been living in Lansdale for the last 13 years. And when my husband and I moved here, we really felt that this was a temporary home for us. And it really wasn't until our children entered school that we found this to be our community and our home. And it was really because they were welcomed and adopted into a school community and by doing so, we were adopted too. And what I found was that the school became our community and the community became our school and they became so interrelated. Likewise, I also have been seeing changes within our community and most evident through small business development and increase and immigrants in the community. And that's really been evident in the school as well and that's a value, a core value of our family. And with my husband being a refugee and trying to raise our children to be bi-cultural. And the school district and the environment has enabled us to do that and to be able to explore their identity and their role. And there are character development lessons that my children have learned in school about learning to deal and to learn from and to partner with other students and other staff that have been so enriching and are really things that I wasn't exposed to, I think, until graduate school. So I'm very grateful for that. And that's why I seek
Okay, um, so what do you see as the biggest strengths and challenges facing the North Penn School District today?
Um, in reviewing the most current strategic plan, um, I think one of the strengths that's really highlighted in that is the focus on, on what makes the school operate. So really focusing on, on the staff and the teachers, um, that make, that make things work. Um, I think that that is a core strength. I think that is, I think that there is a growing recognition of the diversity, um, of needs and interests of students, and that's all being taken into account. I think one of the things that where we need to move is also recognizing that of great value to the school is, is the physical plant, and making sure that the buildings and the resources that are available to students are meeting the same, um, level of, of investment that we're placing in teacher, strengthening teacher, um, um, le- leadership opportunities and things like that.
What do you see as the strengths and we, um, challenges facing North Penn School District over the next five years?
I think that our community is changing so much. I think if we look at, we, you know, the, the composition of, of renters and homeowners, of the growing diversity within that, it's being responsive to all of those needs. Um, I also think that there are major changes, um, within the workforce, and so how do we prepare North Penn students to be contributing members of the community beyond their time within the school district? So once they graduate, um, what does, what does higher education look like? What are opportunities, and are we preparing them to do so? Um, and are we preparing them to give back and be part of the community?
Thank you. Um, okay, so we can open it up to the rest of the board. Um, anybody wanna start off with a question?
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Um, your work experience has allowed you to reach out to communities that are underrepresented, um, in the region and, and frankly, in the country. I'd like to know how you see how that work experience could translate into reaching out to communities in our district that feel they may be underrepresented.
Mm-hmm. So if you look at the immigrant communities in the North Penn School District, um, there, it's not only culturally diverse or ethnically diverse, um, but also, um, I think it's really important to look at somebody's migration experience. So how did they migrate or how did they come to the United States? Also factors into what their needs are or how they feel that they can connect. Um, and so, looking at just the employment opportunities for immigrant parents in our district, we have, you know, we have the pharmaceutical industry, but we also have small-scale businesses, and so the socioeconomic stretch is also very apparent. Um, nothing connects to an immigrant community than extending, um, an arm of welcome. Um, and so, at NAP Elementary, where my children go, I immediately noticed when a sign was posted in several languages, just telling them how to get in to the front door. And so extending little things like that, working with ga- what I call gatekeepers, and so as an immigrant parent or child enters the school district, how are they welcomed, um, is one step. But then also, how are we extending the arm or the reach of the school board and the school district into the community, um, is, is really fascinating, and it, it does require a great deal of time and patience, and, um, admitting that sometimes you, you may make a mistake or you may fumble over a cultural issue, but it does require that extension first.
Thank you. Mr. Casa?
Uh, thank you for coming out tonight and for volunteering for the position. Uh, so I, I, I noticed in the, in your experience, there's a, is it NAP Home and School Association, uh, involvement, and I'm wondering if you could maybe relate that experience, you know, a- as a parent and being involved, seeing the district from that level, but how would that relate to your vision for what a school board director should do, or overall, how this school board should function?
That's a great question. I, um, was initially intimidated to be part of a home and school associa- association because I felt that, you know, I was an overextended working parent, um, there was no possible way that I would have anything that I can contribute, my time and availability wasn't during, you know, what the school may need. Um, and we were, the home, there were individuals who were part of the home and school board at that time who were very adamant on a policy of just give two, just give two hours. And, and they really stretched their arms, you know, open wide to be able to say, we want to include everyone. Um, and so it's been a rewarding experience for me to be able to get involved in ways that I can. Um, and so I think that, you know, having a school board that is accept, accessible, having a superintendent that is, that is accessible and connected, um, is really important. One of the things I did find in working with home and schools is that sometimes they can operate in a bubble, that they're very insular. So what may happen at NAP, they may, you know, some, not everybody may know what's happening in another elementary school, or, uh, even what happens at a middle school with a home and school association. So finding ways that home and schools can better connect, which I am seeing happen through social media groups, um, through text, um, apps where they're, they're connecting in that way, but I think have it, making sure that the district also is extending that, that reach out and inviting home and school associations in is, is, is critical.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, and thank you for coming out. So in your opening statement, or maybe just a little bit afterwards, you had mentioned the, the change in community, um, and you specifically mentioned the percentage ratio with the difference in renting versus homeownership. Um, what does that mean to you then in relation to, to what that means for us here on the school board?
I, when I was in graduate school, I had the privilege of being able to work in community development, um, and seeing the disparities or differences in val- how we value a renter. We often assume that our renter isn't as committed as a homeowner, and I found the exact opposite. Um, I was given the opportunity to form a women's group, and it was very difficult to find women, and I ended up going out to bus stops. And I would begin to talk to women at the bus stops about what they needed and, and what their ideas were for their community, and they were renters, they were people who had never been to a community meeting, they had never been part of, or get, you know, thought that they could give input. So I think it's important to make sure that we understand that all residents are equally valued, um, we are accountable to all of them, um, and we are also, their children have just as much at stake within the school, um, as, as everyone else. Um, and so I think, um, addressing those issues. I do think in some of our, um, if I, if we're looking at the development of housing in the district, some of those rental units are a little bit on the older side, they're not part of the new development, and so making sure that the students that are coming from those areas have access to the resources that they need and the supports that they may need as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. It was such an honor to be, to be selected, even just for this interview, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out.
Okay, as the, uh, four candidates are brought in, I think we'll take just a, a brief moment here to, uh, wait for them, and then, uh, there can be some discussion, so, um, Ms. Lebraski will find each of the candidates, they've been sequestered, as was mentioned, in a soundproof booth offstage.
Okay, so, um, this will be our opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to, um, have public comment on the nominations only, or the candidates, rather, no nominations yet. Does anybody wanna make a public comment? No? Okay, then we'll go on to, uh, the nominations. Would anyone like to start with the nomination?
I nominate Ms. Ramick.
Mrs. Ramick?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Ramick.
I'll second that.
I nominate Dr. Lupo.
I nominate Mr. Kurian.
Okay.
Was there a second to Mr. Dazio? I didn't catch that.
I don't, I don't think you need, I don't think you need seconds for, for nominations.
And just so everybody's clear in terms of, uh, the voting, uh, it's my interpretation, and I believe the board would concur, but I think we need to make sure everybody does that, we would need to have five votes for one particular candidate. If for some reason we're unable to do that, uh, through the first round of balloting, then we would have to have nominations again and have balloting once again. So is everybody on board with that? We need five votes for the candidate.
So there will be an elimination round?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Skoccy, we do-
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Madam President, excuse me. Uh, I just wanna make sure we're clear on the elimination round then as well, or there...
Well, if there isn't five, um, votes for one person, I think we have to, um, vote again, right? So, um, yeah, so the two lowest would drop out.
Whoever doesn't get five drops down.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanna be clear for, for school.
All right.
Okay, so this will be a roll call vote, indicate the candidate that you would, uh, make your selection for. We're starting Mr. Schelling.
Rupp.
Ms. Ott.
Mrs. Ramick.
Mrs. Prokowsky.
Uh, Dr. Rupp, and I'd like to quantify that. Is that allowed?
Well, I think we need one candidate at this point, per the roll call vote, but you can certainly make a comment if you'd like.
Or are you suggesting save it till we're down to one? I, I would like to say that, that I, um, enjoy all the, um, candidates and listening to them, and I felt they each brought different qualities to the, to the room. I, um, I still feel Michelle is the most knowledgeable and has the most depth of knowledge, probably because of the, um, um, campaign. Thank you. Because she had to get, you know, delve into the stuff, but I, I think she has that, and that would give her a great, um, jumpstart, um, when everything. I think, um, Dr. Lupo is, is very well-balanced in what she brings in education, and, um, um, Mr. Kurian, um, I didn't get the depth of knowledge, it may be there, but I didn't hear it like I heard it with Michelle, um, so much. And, and Mrs. Remick, uh, Ramich?
Ramich.
Um, I think you're very knowledgeable with the home and school, and I, I don't know that what the board does and what the home and school does are as closely related as you presented, and that's just what I, what I saw. But my first vote is for Michelle.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to Mr. Warren.
Ramich.
Mr. Fusco.
Kurian.
Mr. Dazio.
Dr. Lupo.
Mr. Casa.
Mrs. Ramich.
And Mrs. Stoll.
Ms. Ramich.
So we have four votes for Mrs. Ramich, we have one vote for Dr. Lupo, we have two votes for Dr. Rupp, and we have one vote for Mr. Kurian. So we do not have a, a majority winner at this point. We have, uh, one candidate with four votes, and one candidate with two votes, and then one each for the other two candidates.
Does anyone want to withdraw? No? Okay. So, um, do we renominate? Okay.
So, so are we, how, how's this gonna work? Which candidates are left?
Did we go like top two, or do we renominate everybody?
Right, so just renominate?
We were talking about dropping the lowest vote count so that in the second round, it's, you're just left with, with the top vote getters? So if, if the count is, it would just leave Rupp and, and Ramich? Or what, what are you thinking?
I'm not sure. I always thought it was you had to get five, and if you didn't get five, you voted again.
Just with the, the full sweep?
Uh, was my understanding, I mean, that, you know, that's what I was saying, that's, you know, that's my understanding.
Let's see what happens.
All right.
Let's roll.
All right. We're doing another roll call.
Okay, vote number two. So I have a new sheet, so the order is random again, with the board president voting last, so this time, Mr. Dazio was first.
Dr. Lupo.
Mr. Fusco.
Mr. Kurian.
Mr. Casa.
Mrs. Ramich.
Mrs. Prokowsky.
Dr. Rupp.
Mr. Schelling.
Dr. Rupp.
Ms. Ott.
Mrs. Ramich.
Mr. Warren.
Ramich.
And Mrs. Stoll.
Mrs. Ramich.
I don't believe anything changed.
No?
Nothing changed.
We have. The same count for vote number two.
So, can I, can I say that my understanding of the school code would be that if any one candidate fails to receive a majority vote of the board, um, no action is taken, and then once 30 days elapse-
That's right.
-the matter would be referred to common, Court of Common Pleas, and there would be a hearing at the Court of Common Pleas-
That's correct.
-where the testimony would be taken, and the candidates would come, and they would present their, their testimony in court. I've been through that process, but my understanding of the school code is that that's how the process would work from here.
And my, again, just from, you know, I would love to say, you know, the two lowest vote are done, but I'm not sure, I'm, I'm an attorney, so I'm almost positive that you're correct, that it's gonna have to, you have to get five. That's my understanding. Anybody wanna add anything, superintendent, or?
No, I, I think you need to have five, I think-
You have to have five, no matter what, right? If you don't have five, then it goes to the, the common pleas, that's my, I, I believe Mr. Dazio is absolutely correct.
It's certainly a board decision. I, I might suggest there might be some discussion perhaps, or some debate or something like that regarding the qualifications of the candidates.
Would it, I'm sorry, would it help you guys if I sat down?
Yes.
And I sat down?
Okay.
Thank you. Although I would encourage you to run in 2019.
Yeah.
You know? Stay involved. Um, okay, so that leaves us-
Do we need to do a full re-vote, or just ask how Ed transfers his vote?
No, just do, you gotta do a full-
Yeah. This is, this is bureaucracy. Here we go.
All right, Mr. Skoccy.
Okay, vote number three. All right? Everyone ready? Mr. Fusco.
Mr. Kurian.
Mr. Casa.
Mrs. Ramich.
Mr. Schelling.
Mrs. Rupp. Or Dr. Rupp.
Mrs. Prokowsky.
Dr. Rupp.
Mr. Warren.
Uh, Mrs. Ramich.
Ms. Ott.
Mrs. Ramich.
Mr. Dazio.
Mr. Kurian.
And Mrs. Stoll.
Mrs. Ramich.
I don't think I need to add this up because I don't think we have a-
Now it's time for the feats of strength.
Five votes for, for any one candidate.
Okay.
We're getting there.
We are getting there.
It's been a long-
So, what was that, four, two, and two?
Correct.
All right. I would've thought third time was the charm. Okay, um, so, one more time.
At any time, we can take a, we can recess the meeting for a brief time and take a break.
Let's try it one more time.
Well, well, let's see, does anyone else wanna, you know, can drop out, or ask that question, or, no, you know, that's it. Yeah, for procedure.
No? Okay, so let's do this a fourth time.
Okay. Okay. I, I just would like to add before we take the vote, I, I think this shows that we have tremendously qualified-
Okay, so let's do this a fourth time.
Okay.
Okay.
I just would like to add before we take the vote, I think this shows that we have tremendously qualified people before us. You know? And this here represents only a very small majority of those that apply. And I think the eight of us that are up here know how difficult it was to pick our top three. And it just goes--
So much so that we got four.
We did. So much so that we have four is correct. This is healthy, and I appreciate it. And regardless of the outcome here, we're going to come out with a great board member because we have great candidates before us.
Agreed.
Okay, vote number four. Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. Kurian.
Mr. Fusco.
Mr. Kurian.
Mr. Casa.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mrs. Prokowski.
Dr. Rupp.
Mr. Schelling. Ms. Ott.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mr. Warren.
Mrs. Ramech.
And Mrs. Stoll.
Mrs. Ramech.
Okay, four, two, two.
Should we take a recess?
Unless you want to go to-- Do it after the-- I don't know how long the presentation for that--
Is-- May I offer that we consider any public comment weighing in? Is that possible now?
Sure. Would anybody else like to make public comment?
Can we have questions?
I'm sorry?
Can we have questions?
Sure. I think you have to come up to the podium and sign in your name and address, and-- You know the drill.
I know the drill. Good evening, Board. My name's Elaine, and I live at 106 Windsor Circle. I guess a question, and I'm sorry, I'm going to get your name incorrect, was we heard the other three candidates and what they bring to the table, what their jobs are, whatnot. We heard a little bit of your education. What specifically do you bring, education-wise, knowledge-wise, job-wise, to the board?
I guess we'll start backwards, Atlanta, and it's more easy if that's easier than Kurian, but--
Thank you. I work at the Attorney General's office. I'm a Deputy Attorney General. My job is to prevent fraud and prosecute in that arena, and also make sure that our citizens are physically taken care of and also physically taken care of. In terms of education, as I said, I went to public school my whole life. I believe in public school. My children had opportunities to go to non-public schools, and we chose an area where we could be in public school. So I think that's important for my children and for children in general in terms of what I bring is just the willingness to do the work, the passion to be part of that team. As I said earlier when I spoke, I'm very impressed by the other folks here. I texted my brothers, and I think they might be-- Their resumes are more impressive than mine, but-- The reason I haven't stepped down is because I still think I would be a helpful member of this board. You know? It doesn't bother me to clean up afterwards, and that's what I bring, is a willingness to work.
I got another question, I guess, for all three of you that are left. For me, I'm very honest and willing. I'm a very loud-mouthed Italian parent that sits back, and I will, kind of like Dr. Rupp said, I'll tell you what I think, when I think, how I think. And I think this year with the new board and parents and teachers and everybody stepping up and actually coming forth and giving our opinions. To you three, how are you willing to deal with parents like me that come up here and kind of give my opinion, what I say, what I think? And to work with others, not to just be like a one-sided thing, but willingness to work with us? I think that that's been a big issue over the years of a board just being, nope, this is the way it's been done for 15 years. This is the way we're saying with it. We're not looking for change. The community, the parents, the teachers, they want change. They want board members that we can come to, we can talk to. We can say these are our concerns. How are you guys willing to do that?
Should I go first inside the mic, or do you want to go first, Michelle? I'm used to people yelling at me all the time, so I'm okay with that. I'm a relatively laid-back person until things need to change. And I think it's wonderful that, especially the fact that we have an open forum, that people have a chance to speak and question. If you don't get a chance to question the people who are supposed to take care of your children, then we're not doing our jobs right. But in terms of, you know, being a prosecutor, it also means that when I go out into the community and someone tells me, hey, this is what's going on, and this person needs a break, or this person needs to be put away a little bit longer, that's input that I listen to every day. And that's the kind of decisions I make every day. So I'm okay with being yelled at, and I'm good at listening. And I'm also good at acting when necessary. So, you know, I don't have a problem with loud mothers yelling at me.
We talked about this earlier, actually, before the meeting. So I get yelled at less now in the job than I'm in-- than the job I had for nine years. But it was not unusual for people to come in and scream at me that I hated them, and I hated their animal because I wouldn't treat their animal for free, and I wanted their animal to die, whatever. Couldn't be further from the truth, but people say things when they're emotional. And so I'm used to being yelled at. No big deal. I learned a long time ago not to take those things personally. I'm in a profession where the suicide rate is six times the national average, and I'm still alive. You know, I've got broad shoulders. It's not a big deal. People can yell at me. I can take it. You know, I might make a little joke back at you sometimes. I have people tell me all the time that the internet says that their animal has X, Y, and Z. And so I listen very calmly, listen to what they have to say, and then I take a deep breath, and I say, well, I went to veterinary school, and I have the license, and I've been practicing for 20 years. And in my experience, I'm going to respectfully disagree. But I'm going to listen to what you have to say, and we're going to figure out how to come to a decision together, and we're going to do what works for you and what works for your animal. And we'll get there at the end of the day. So I make compromise on a daily basis. If I didn't, I wouldn't be in my profession. The profession has changed drastically over the last 20 years, and I've had to learn to adapt. And I think everything that everybody does today, you have to learn to adapt. We live in a 24/7 news cycle. People are angry about lots of different things, and most of the time, it has nothing to do with us. It just spills over on us. So you need to figure out how to operate in those situations, and-- You're behind me. So no big deal. You can yell at me. I might yell back, depending on the mood I'm in. Just kidding. It's okay, because you should be in my IEP meetings. So I've yelled a few times, too. So, yeah, so no big deal. I'll listen to what you have to say and try to figure out what we can do, and I'll still talk to you at the end of the day.
I've only listened to the internet.
I think community input from all levels is critical to the success of a school district and really to a board. And so providing forums so that parents can come and give their feedback and opinion is critical. And for parents who have the courage to come and state their address and their name and be able to do that is really important, and those parents should be commended. I also think we should be making efforts to try to reach out to those community members who can't make the meetings or who do struggle to get here, but whose thoughts and opinions are just as critical. I think always having and employing a participatory planning model and getting as many people involved and getting the feedback of as many people involved in our communities is so critical and will help to ensure that the school board can uphold its duty of, you know, of being a good steward of public funding, but also of being connected and accountable to the larger community.
Thank you. Do you want to make public comments? Sure, go ahead.
You guys are fabulous. Thank you for coming and volunteering and talking and taking your night. I'll sign in. I'm Christine. And as Mrs. Prokowski asked Mrs. Ramech about the home and school or stated that maybe home and school was really kind of your only background, I'm assuming that you all did have resumes as well of all the candidates. So I would just like to ask Mrs. Ramech to discuss a little bit about her background since we were very clear with the other candidates about the background of your job and what skill set you have from that. Thank you.
For the last 18 years, I've been working in the field of immigrant integration and services, but primarily in a nonprofit setting. So my background really is in nonprofit management. So I've been part of many, many strategic planning processes. I've even facilitated strategic plans for small immigrant startup groups across the country. I've had to engage in tough policy debates. I've had to create and manage and adapt budgets on a much smaller scale than the school district, but the components are very similar. I've had to manage a capital campaign and relocating programming and staffing to accommodate construction in 17 languages and communicating that. It was-- And so my background is varied, and I think a lot that I would be thrilled to contribute.
Thank you. Okay, so I assume nobody is going to drop out, right? So, okay. So there'll be the three candidates, another roll call? Any other public comment? I'm sorry. Did you want to say something? You may comment. You may comment.
Since public comment is close, thank you. Echoing what Mr. D'Azio said before, this really is not something to be frustrated about, but we should be proud about as a community that this has occurred because there have been no decisions made behind closed doors. It's been a transparent process. And, you know, that's what we're here to do. I appeal to every one of my fellow board directors to please consider this decision before we vote, as I know you have each round. This is very important. We were elected to make decisions, especially the tough ones. And to have this go to a judge in 30 days and take that decision out of the community's hands is not something that we should take lightly. So in considering your vote, and especially since at least one of us, maybe more, would have to change their vote in order to make the community realize we were put here to make the tough decisions, please just take a moment and make sure you realize exactly the direction that we're headed, and this is a tough decision. And I respect the decisions of each one of our board members. Thank you.
I had a quick question, too. Just-- Because I think I heard Mr. Schelling-- I think he stepped away for a second. Yeah, it wasn't where he's at. It was just, I think, a comment that he brought up, that it was either tough to go first or tough to go last because, especially in this kind of environment where you could be a little bit of a kingmaker because you're going last and you've seen the votes that come up. Are we able to, instead of roll call vote, alter where we all still publicly write our name down and who we voted for, and they just all go out at once? Kind of, I don't know, for lack of a better word, survivor style? But at least then that everybody writes down the person all at once, and they're voting for the person they think is best, and might not be in a spot to, for lack of a better word, king make?
I think parliamentary procedure mandates that I go last, right? As precedent.
Oh, is that a thing? Okay. Just asking. Seems good. Cool story.
I'm good. Right, right. Well, I think we should do a roll call. It should be open and transparent, right?
Yeah, so I mean--
Nothing's changed. This is round 20. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Skrocky.
Okay, vote number five. Ms. Ott.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mr. Warren.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Prokowski.
Dr. Rupp.
Mr. Casa.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mr. Fusco.
Mrs. Ramech.
Mr. D'Azio.
Mrs. Ramech.
And Mrs. Stoll.
Mrs. Ramech.
Okay, Mrs. Ramech has six votes, and Dr. Rupp has two votes. Congratulations.
I would like to, on behalf of the board, thank all the candidates that came out. It was a really tough decision. Like was said before, we had a tough time narrowing it down to three, and we got four. And I know I've been through the appointment process three times myself. It is a little nerve-wracking getting up there to speak, and I appreciate you all coming out there to do it. I sincerely hope you will stay involved in politics and, you know, in the process. Consider maybe running for the next election in 2019 and keep coming out to the school board meetings and getting involved and becoming more informed as we go along. So thank you very much for your participation tonight. We really, really appreciate it.
I would just like to add, I intend to reach out to the three candidates who were not selected tonight to talk about ways to get involved in our school district. Because everybody here, the four candidates that we've interviewed tonight, in addition to the eight or nine who are not here, all have, you know, tremendous talent to offer to us. And I think it's incumbent upon everybody up here as board members to, when we have that talent, to try to figure out how we can use it for the benefit of the district that we all serve and are proud to call our home. So I look forward to speaking with the three candidates that weren't successful this evening about ways to continue to stay involved, and thank you for coming out tonight and putting your name in.
Yes, Mr. Kurian?
I just wanted to congratulate Julianne. And also, thank you for letting us be a part of this process. When I spoke to these three ladies in the beginning, as I said, I was impressed. So I'm glad and happy and comfortable that, you know, my children will be taken care of and my neighbor's children and my community will be taken care of. So I'm happy to be part of this process. I'm happy to have such fine people on the board. So thank you for your time and love.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schelling, did you want to say something? Okay. All right, so we'll have the swearing-in now? Okay.
Oh, it is. Do you have anyone who wants to hold this for you? You care? Would you rather just affirm? You can do that, too.
Sure.
Okay.
Julianne, this is Judge Levine. I don't know if...
Oh, hey, how you doing? That was a lot of fun. That was really, that was interesting. It was. Okay, raise your right hand. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties...
And that I will discharge my duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Levine, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Ramich, you can take your seat up at the table here.
Nothing like getting to work right away.
Judge, do you have an oath by any chance?
Do I have an oath? That I just gave?
No, you don't have the paper, correct?
No, I don't, and I was wondering if I need to...
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
I'll stick around.
Okay, great.
Do you want to stick around this evening, Dr. Dietrich, or do you want to do that tomorrow?
At the convenience of the judge, I mean, you certainly can. Do we have it back in...
I only have a hard copy that was signed, but I want a plain copy.
Okay, we'll have to take care of it tomorrow. Yeah, we'll find it.
Thank you, Judge. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Welcome.
Yes. I guess then we'll be moving on to the next item.
Yes, we do have this evening a 2018-19 preliminary budget update, and Mr. Skrocky will present that to the board and the community.
I guess I may need some assistance from our students here as I...
Mrs. Skrocky, while you're getting that ready to go, can we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Do I have to... All right, so we will be continuing this meeting now with the budget presentation from Mr. Skrocky. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present our first draft of the 2018-19 budget.
Is your thing on? There you go. You picking this up now? Okay. Tonight, this presentation is not meant to be all-inclusive or exhaustive. We wanted to give you a first glimpse of the first draft of the budget, which was just finished within the past couple of days, to give you an idea of what the trend looks like for the upcoming budget. So we want to talk about the timeline, too. That's really important in the process, and give you a very high-level overview of what's driving the budget and what the next steps in the process are going to be. So with Act One, the budget process is really a three-step process, and we're at the first step right now, the preliminary budget. The second step is to approve a proposed final budget, and the third step is a final budget. So the board would take action on all three steps. And the preliminary budget is something that came out of Act One of 2006. Prior to Act One of 2006, it was really a two-step process. In May, you would have a preliminary budget, and in June, you'd have your final budget. So with Act One, a third step was added. And now, the intent of a preliminary budget is really only one purpose for the preliminary budget, and that is to determine if exceptions are needed or not, exceptions to the Act One index. And I'll explain the Act One index shortly. But that, we now have a three-step process. So for those districts that elect not to even consider exceptions, like North Penn did this past year, you're back to the same two-step process that existed prior to Act One. Okay? So in discussions with our finance committee in the fall, the administration presented to the finance committee for the upcoming budget year, we felt that in consideration for the possibility of a new board coming on, that would be in the best interest to consider exceptions this year and have discussion about exceptions instead of recommending a resolution not to exceed the Act One index in the fall, as we did last year. So tonight's the first presentation, the first looked at the preliminary budget. January 22nd, we have a finance meeting, and just a reminder, that meeting was moved up from January 29th, and the finance committee meeting is now a committee of the whole. So we'll be making a more in-depth presentation at the January 22 finance committee meeting. We also have a special finance committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 1st. We'll have more discussion about the budget at that point in time, because then on February 6th, the board will need to take action on the preliminary budget. That is required based on a timeline set forth by the Department of Education to meet the Act One guidelines and compliance. Also, on February 6th, the board will be asked to take action and actually officially apply for Act One referendum exceptions, and I'll explain those in more detail later. If something would happen, if there's a philosophical discussion to be had tonight, and the board decides tonight that the board is not interested in filing for Act One exceptions, action would actually have to be taken to pass a resolution not to exceed the Act One index at next Thursday's action meeting, January 18th. Okay, that would be the deadline to pass that resolution based on the number of voting meetings we have between now and February.
So, excuse me, I'm a little off. So would that have to be recommended to state there, or can it be recommended at the action?
It certainly can come from the floor at the action meeting, but an actual vote would have to be taken that night, so we could communicate to the Department of Education that North Penn School District, per board action, will not be seeking any kind of exceptions to the Act One index. And if that's the case, if that happens next Thursday night, in essence, we can revert back to the old process, the old pre-Act One of 2006 process, where a preliminary budget would not have to be passed then until May and a final budget in June. It really render the February action of a passage of a preliminary budget in February would render it moot if no exceptions are being sought at that point in time. So what happens from February to May is we will have continued budget presentations and updates, both at the finance committee meeting, and we do have a total of four special finance committee meetings scheduled. We have monthly meetings of the finance committee, and then special meetings scheduled for February, March, April, and May. And the special meetings will be 100% budget discussion. There will also be budget discussion mixed in with the regular finance committee meetings. In our budget calendar, we have adoption of the proposed final budget or preliminary budget, and if the board doesn't seek Act One exceptions, on May 17th. And then, final budget adoption would occur at the action meeting on June 21st. And you might see a note there on May 17th that will be asking for the adoption of the proposed final budget at the board work session. You might be wondering why that's at the board work session and not the action meeting, and the reason for that is 30 days need to transpire between the passage of the proposed final budget and the final budget. And that can only happen with the passage at the board work session. If we waited until the May action meeting, that would not give us 30 days between the meetings. Okay, I'd like to explain different types of budgets and what we're looking at here at the North Penn budget. There's really three types of budgets that you can encounter. And we are talking here about our general fund budget. This is the main operating budget of the school district. We have other accounts and other funds in the school district. For example, we have our capital reserve fund, we have a healthcare fund, but here we're talking about the general fund budget. This is where the majority of our operating revenues occur. And we're having a malfunction. Okay, we're back on. Balanced budget is what every district seeks. A balanced budget is where all of your revenues, all the inflows of money equal your outflows. Revenues equal expenditures. Another type of budget would be a deficit budget. This is a budget where your expenditures are higher than your revenues, so you're spending more money in that budget year than you're bringing in. And a surplus budget would be a situation where you are bringing more money in than you're spending. Revenues are higher than expenditures. Now, I want to preface the presentation tonight. The numbers you'll see assume is 0% tax increase. We don't want to be presumptuous with any level of tax increase, so when we talk about the budget that's being presented for a first draft, there's no tax increase baked into any of these numbers. We will talk about possible tax increase implications later on, but the numbers you'll see have no tax increase included. Now, with that said, our first draft budget is a deficit budget of $9.7 million. $9.7 million. That means that we will be spending $9.7 million more than we'll be bringing in, again, assuming a 0% tax increase. Okay? And the breakdown of that deficit looks like this. We're illustrating here the 2018-19 revenues and the 2018-19 expenditures. So we're at $250.9 million in revenues and $260.6 million in expenditures, leaving us with a $9.7 million deficit. For comparison purposes, our 2017-18 budget, that's the current budget we're in right now, we have a $4.5 million deficit budget. So it'll be back-to-back years of deficit budgets, which is certainly not something that's sustainable over a long period of time. So our year-over-year revenues, 1.22% increase, and our year-over-year expenditures, 3.26% increase.
How much is that increase? Excuse me, I'm a little... Do you want to wait till the end of the question?
I might answer your question throughout the presentation, but you can certainly ask it now.
How much is added to pension?
I'm going to cover that.
Right, thank you.
2017, 2018, there's a $4.5 million deficit. I spoke at last year's meeting about the concern I had about the number and the board's failure to close that deficit last year. And I considered that a structural deficit last year. Is that $4.5 million deficit that failed to be closed last year, can you speak to the impact that that has had on the now $9.7 million deficit that we're facing?
Absolutely. So the $4.5 million, I do need to state that about 1.5 of that was a one-time charge. That was for purchase of Chromebooks. That was really a situation where we had, it was a question of what year to spend the money out of. Couldn't be spending the previous fiscal year, because the overall budget could have been overspent. So we spent in the 17, 18 years, so that's 1.5. So it was really a $3 million ongoing, sustainable deficit, structural imbalance, if you will, at that point in time. So when you start the 18, 19 year, all else equal, you're starting out with a $3 million hole. Okay, so all the expenditures typically carry over. It's really rare when you have reductions in expenditures, cost of living increases, contractual obligations, and things like that. You typically start whatever your deficit is, and you build from that deficit. So we really started out with a $3 million ongoing deficit before we got to any line item in the 18, 19 budget. So anytime you have a structural deficit, unless you have one-time expenses or one-time revenues that you need to discount, you really are putting yourself in a hole for future years, when you have a structural imbalance. And that's something, you know, we talked a lot, and I'll talk a little bit later, about our bond rating. That's something that Moody's, the agency that does our bond rating, they pay particular attention to ongoing structural deficits. Now, we've been very fortunate, although we've had structural deficits over the past several years, our final audited numbers, we've had surpluses at the end of the year. So we are conservative with our budgeting, but the budgets continue to be tighter and tighter and tighter. By that, I mean our variance between our budget figures and our actual figures continue to shrink. So we're within 1% to 2% variance on expenditures and revenues, and that number is shrinking. Years ago, it was in the 5% to 7% range. So our budgets, that's an example why our budgets on the expenditure side are very, very tight. There's not much play in the budget. Our variances are very small.
Thank you for that, Steve. And I appreciate that answer, and I asked that question for the benefit of all the new members here, to highlight the point that you've got to get the budget to a point where it truly balances, because if you don't, all you're doing is kicking that problem down the road. And now you see the problem is, we're starting with almost a double-digit deficit, which makes the work that we have to do this year that much more complicated.
I never would imagine the day where I would say, "I was really pleased with $9.7 million deficit," quite honestly. And I'll explain why in a moment, because...
Again, that's why I asked the question. The thing that's driving this, since I've been around, me and Mrs. Prakowski, is the pension.
Absolutely. That's a major part.
Pension is freaking killing us. It's killing us. I'm being totally honest with you. It's not mismanagement of funds, it's the pension. It's like breaking our backs, not just North Penn, talk to any other school district. It's ridiculous.
So what do we do about it?
What happens? We can't do anything about it. We didn't create it. Harrisburg has to step up, and they have to do something about it. They have to restructure, reorganize, or do something. Because I'm telling you right now, nobody, nobody in the private industry pays the amount of money that... What is the percentage? 32%?
Yeah, next year, it's going up again.
I mean, it's lunacy.
It's 33.43% next year, and we were quite pleased with that, if you can believe it.
It was 2001 that started. And I just want to say this, not that I was right, or a lot of us stood up back then and said, "You're going to bankrupt school districts for this," because they went back and they redid it, and thought, "Oh, no, they're actuaries. Talk to these guys. Talk to your state representative. The actuaries, it's their fault." Well, why was it people like us who aren't, you know, average citizens? I'm not a financial guru, I'm just a common sense type of guy, who said, "Look, guys, this isn't going to work. It's going to break the system." And sure enough, we're sitting here now with frustration, I'm talking out of frustration, having to... And it's not just us. Talk to any school district in Pennsylvania. Some of them actually stopped paying certain things. So anyway, I just want to be fair, you know, to everybody, that is what has to be done. And, you know, I just, it's like I'm beating the drum here, but...
This is the fifth budget I presented to the North Penn Board of School Directors, and the previous four budgets only had bad and ugly in the budget. At least we have some good, bad, and ugly in this year's budget. And I'll talk about some of the good. So that's why I'm pleased with a $9.7 million deficit as a first draft, because quite honestly, based on some of our projections last year, now some things have changed, and we'll talk about those, but we were projecting somewhere in the neighborhood of a $12 to $14 million first draft of the budget this year. So it's actually better than what we expected. But let me talk about the Act One index a little bit. Again, Act One was passed in 2006. Act One index is a quasi-inflationary-type index. It's based on two components. One is a federal-level component, and one is a state-level component. It's put forth by the Department of Education each year, and for the 18, 19 budget year, it's 2.4%. And basically, that number then, for North Penn, based on our level of wealth, that means that taxes cannot be raised more than 2.4% unless one of two things happen. You have a referendum, or you ask PDE, Department of Education, for exceptions to the Act One index. And there's only two exceptions that North Penn would even be eligible for, and they would be for retirement and for special education. There's another one that's out there for grandfather debt, but that doesn't apply to North Penn, so there's no sense even spending any time on that. I'll talk about the retirement and the special ed exception in a moment. But 2.4%, and the Act One index, you can see it varies. It reached a high of 4.4%. I think it's important to note that it's a lagging index, lagging the U.S. economy. You can see that it was at 4.4% and 4.1% when we were in the midst of a major recession, and it took a couple of years for that index to go down to reflect that recession. And now, it's kind of lagging once again, even though the economy is picking up. The uptick in the Act One index has been slow. Now, the 3.3% you see on the far right for the next three years, that's a projection by the IFO, the Independent Fiscal Office. They typically update their projections in January of each year. They have not released that yet, but they actually did project something close to 3% for the 18, 19 year, and it only came in at 2.4%. But they are projecting 3.3 in the three outlying years. So the two Act One exceptions that I mentioned, that the district potentially could be eligible for, would be retirement and special education. You would think retirement, with the way retirement costs are climbing, that that's a no-brainer. The school district would be eligible for retirement. Guess what? The school district is not eligible for a retirement exception this year. And the reason for that is the rate of increase in the retirement rate is the lowest it's been now in the past nine years. So we're actually getting a break there. So, again, be thankful for 33.43% is our rate. So for every dollar of eligible salary that is paid, we pay 33.43 cents on a dollar. But the rate of increase over the current year, the 17, 18 year, is so low that we are not eligible for a retirement exception. We are eligible for a special ed exception. We did some preliminary calculations, and that's roughly $1.7 million. $1.7 million. So if the board would authorize administration to apply for exceptions, that means the potential is there. You don't actually decide to use the exception now, it's only a decision to apply for the exception. The board would be eligible for up to $1.7 million. So any or all of that 1.7 could be used for an additional tax increase above the Act One index of 2.4%.
What's the rough percentage on that, in terms of a millage adjustment?
I'm going to cover that in a moment.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm not surprised.
Okay, so it's important to note in any budget presentation, we need to talk about the reserves that the school district has in the general fund. And our reserves in the general fund are called fund balance. Some might call it rainy day fund or retained earnings. It's called fund balance for public school districts. And we have a couple of different types of fund balance I want to talk about. And fund balance does play a large role in any kind of budget decisions that are made. The first item for fund balance, we don't spend much time on it. It's non-spendable, and that's really inventory and prepaid expenses. That's $567,000. It's really not money that's at your discretion to spend. The second component is, it's called an assignment. An assignment of fund balance is something that is made by the board, and it's basically carving out some money. It could be a plan for future expense. And in this case, we have $2.7 million carved out or signed for our self-insurance fund. That's for medical, for medical expenses, help mitigate any kind of future medical expenses. We also have another area of fund balance that's committed. Again, this happens by board action, just like the assignment happens by board action, committed fund balance happens by board action. And we have committed fund balance for PISers. That's the retirement, the pension fund, the Pennsylvania School Employee Retirement System. We have $16.9 million carved out for committed fund balance for PISers. And actually, in working with the finance committee, we have a long-term plan to use that $16.9 million to draw that balance down, to help mitigate future pension increases. For example, in the 2017-18 year, we are planning on using $1 million of that committed fund balance. So if everything goes according to budget, $1 million is going to be used for committed fund balance, to help balance this year's budget. And then we have another area of fund balance that's called unassigned. And as you can imagine in the name, unassigned means that it's not designated for any particular purpose. We have $20.8 million. And with the size of North Penn's budget, there is a law that says the unassigned piece cannot be more than 8% of the projected ending expenditures for the fiscal year. So the $20.8 million, ironically... The twenty point eight million dollars ironically is exactly eight percent of the two thousand eighteen nineteen first draft expenditures. That didn't happen, that happened by chance. That was not planned, by the way. It came out like exactly at eight percent.
God, I didn't take credit for it, so.
So total fund balance, forty-one million dollars. That's a very healthy fund balance and that didn't happen by accident. That happened through prudent planning. Over a long period of time. And that's really the number one reason why the school district's bond rating did get upgraded this past year by Moody's. When we did the second borrowing for the renovations at Montgomery Elementary School. Um, it was really primarily due to the fund balance that the school district had. So Moody's is the rating agency and we received an upgrade. From double A two to double A one, so the lower the number, the one designation is certainly more advantageous. Allowed us to get a lower interest rate, allowed us to save several hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money. And puts us in elite status in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for school districts. I think we're one of only eighteen school districts in the Commonwealth. That have a double A one rating or higher. And that is because of this chart, because of the fund balance. So it's really important when you have a deficit budget, you have to be careful not to bridge the gap of a deficit budget year after year by using your savings. Just like your home budget. If you continue to pay for ongoing expenditures with your savings, at some point you'll have no savings. So the unassigned fund balance piece, that's the piece that we pay particular attention to. Uh, that's a piece many times that's used to bridge a gap in a deficit budget. Uh, but you can see going back about eight years, that unassigned fund balance has increased. To slightly above twenty-one million dollars. So very healthy, it was very prudent, it was well thought out and well planned to have that level of fund balance. Puts the school district in a very envious financial position, even though we have our challenges. So I talked about the good, the bad and the ugly, right? So this year I'm excited. We have good in the budget. Believe it or not, we have. Good in the budget even with a nine point seven million dollar deficit. So first off, we have the expiration of a technology lease. Uh, this was a lease that was in place for three years. Uh, funds were borrowed. Uh, it was a lease for purchase of staff laptops three years ago. And we are paying off the remaining payment of that three-year lease this year. It's one point three million dollars. So that is removed from the eighteen nineteen budget, the one point three million dollars. So in this year's budget for eighteen nineteen, the first draft, we don't have any retirements baked into the budget yet and we typically experience roughly. Eight hundred thousand dollars or more in savings and retirements. So although we have that nine point seven million dollar first draft deficit. The reality of it is, we know we're going to be able to save at least eight hundred thousand dollars just through. The changeover from somebody retiring at a higher salary, somebody coming in at a lower salary, roughly eight hundred thousand dollars. Also, the retirement rate, when that was issued by the piecers board in early December, it was quite exciting because. The rate wasn't as high as what was expected and what we were planning on. So the rate was actually projected to be thirty-four point one eight percent and it came in only at thirty-three. Point four three percent. Yeah, that's all. So that small reduction actually resulted in in a savings, if you will, over what we were expecting of nine hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Absolutely. And another important point to note is when we talk about the retirement rate, I always clarify, the retirement rate number here, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand is. Gross expenditure rate. And the reason why that's important to differentiate, we have a gross retirement rate and a net retirement rate. So nine hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars is the gross expenditure. We receive fifty percent back of our retirement expenditures. Back from Department of Education in the form of a subsidy. Okay, so I'll differentiate and I'll specify whether it's a gross rate or a net rate. Nine thirty-eight would be on the expenditure side. We get half of that back, we would show on the revenue side because we do receive a retirement subsidy of fifty percent of what we spend. So other good components of the budget. Uh, we shared with the Finance Committee back in November. That our first look or first draft of our healthcare rates for the upcoming year. Actually are one point three million dollars less than what our current healthcare rates are. Now, how is that possible on the face of six, seven, eight percent medical inflation? Well, a couple of reasons. Uh, we settled several collective bargaining agreements this past year. And with those agreements come changes with our core medical plan, our core medical plan. Those changes take effect July one, two thousand eighteen. So the core medical plan will have a lower value than the previous medical plan, meaning that it will save premium dollars for the school district. And secondly, the contribution rate from our employees that are eligible for medical coverage will increase from sixteen percent. This year to seventeen percent next year. So those two factors combined resulted in a one point three million million dollar reduction. Again, that's. Over the current year budget. If you take a look at what we were projecting last year with our multi-year projection prior to the settlement of the labor agreement. We're actually about two point three million dollars less than what we were actually expecting with our projections. But year over year, one point three million dollars in savings, that's that's excellent. Also, our growth in EIT, that's our earned income tax, that's the local one percent tax. Transfer tax, that is a point five percent transaction that tax that we receive anytime a property is sold in North Penn School District. We receive point five percent and the municipality in which the property is located receives point five percent. And our investment income. Uh, between those three items, we are able to generate an additional one point two five million dollars in revenue in our budget for next year. That's pretty substantial growth. Uh, we've seen solid growth in our earned earned income tax. I've been reporting month after month to our Finance Committee about the large number of commercial properties that are being sold. And every time a commercial property is being sold, that generates transfer tax. And our investment income, I've also mentioned uh monthly about our aggressive. Safe investment program that we try to maximize our return on investment income. It continues to generate several hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue over the previous year. So that's good news. Also, growth in our tax base. Our tax base is really the collection, the compilation of all the values, all the assessed values of the properties in North Penn School District. Add up all the values in North Penn School District, that represents your tax base. Last year I reported to the board that our tax base typically grows about point five, point five-five percent per year. Half a percent a year. That's pretty good growth for suburban school district. Last year, however, due to one particular adverse assessment appeal. An assessment appeal is when a property owner or the school district challenges the value of the property. We had one particular property owner that challenged the value of the property and there was a significant reduction. It was over twenty million dollars in assessed value. Reduction based on this assessment appeal because a property was sold and basically gutted and is is a shell right now. Uh, based on that transaction and that assessment appeal, our tax base last year had virtually no growth. It was basically flat. So. Even before you talk about any kind of level of the tax increase, you always want to take a look at what's the natural growth. This would be your natural growth just in. Uh, new properties that are being developed, additions to property. That increases the tax base for property. This year, we're pleased to report that just the growth in that tax base will generate roughly five hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in new revenue. Okay, so last year was basically zero. This year it's closer to the historical average, five hundred seventy-two thousand. Okay, now on to the to the bad and the ugly, right? The financial challenges. Well. The first thing that we looked at this year is um as part of the budget process and trying to shave our budget as much as possible. In the current fiscal year, we lowered our, what's called our budgetary reserve. From one million dollars to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, you have to know the history of the budgetary reserve. Several years ago, um, I think going back maybe ten years or so, that budgetary reserve was. Five, six million dollars in the budget. And the budgetary reserve is a line item in the budget that's basically for unplanned expenditures. And we chart those unplanned expenditures throughout the year. We chart them out in a spreadsheet and that's part of our monthly financial. One of the financial reports we share with the Finance Committee, budgetary transfers, budgetary reserve transfers. So these are unplanned expenses during the year. I think a question was asked when we were doing, Mr. Kenny and I were doing the air conditioning. Uh, discussion about what would happen if a boiler went down or a roof had a leak and we had to make an emergency repair. Well. One of the ways to fund a project like that would be through budgetary reserve. That would be an example of a. Unplanned unbudgeted expense that might occur during the year. So it's interesting, we actually have a board policy that states the budgetary reserve needs to be one point five million dollars. So in the eighteen nineteen budget, we are complying with the policy and changing our number from seven hundred fifty thousand. To one point five million dollars, as per the policy. So we're doubling the budgetary reserve. And even with that double. It still only represents point five eight percent of our total budget, a very small amount. So. That's a very small variance. It's a small allowable play for unplanned expenses. So we can certainly have further discussion about the one point five million dollars. Is that the right number to have in policy or not? But for first draft, we felt it was prudent to comply with the policy because it is the policy and start out our draft at one point five million dollars. Secondly, we have purchase of ten new school buses in the budget and the purchase of a new band truck. And that totals a little bit over one million dollars. Uh, we feel it's very important to take a look at purchasing new buses. It's been over two years now since we purchased any new buses. We have a fleet of approximately a hundred fifty buses, a hundred fifty vehicles. That ranges in varying sizes from vans to wheelchair buses to small buses to seventy-two passenger, eighty-four passenger buses. Uh, no new buses have been purchased over the past two years. We've been selling a lot of our spares, but no new buses have been purchased. The average age of our fleet right now is closing in on twelve years. The ideal range is somewhere around eight to ten years for the average age of your fleet. So let's just use ten years for the sake of argument. That would mean that we should be purchasing about fifteen buses a year to keep our fleet with a ten-year average. So we haven't purchased buses in two years, so if you buy into the concept of keeping the fleet around a ten-year average age. That means we're thirty buses behind. Uh, we're recommending ten in next year's budget. And that is a direct purchase. That is not a lease purchase. That would be an outright purchase.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question? Is there uh the rationale for the not buying buses for the last two years?
Um, save money. It was it was a cost driver to try to postpone the inevitable. To try to get as close to a balanced budget as possible.
And I don't, I don't know if this is true, but in the past, I've heard that we take care of our buses so well that we used to, when we. Would sell them, people in other districts would buy them. So I don't know, I haven't checked recently. I'm just saying, I, they're very well maintained, I was told. Now, that may be another reason. I don't know. I'm assuming that. I just remember that they used to be well taken care of. And on the other hand, sometimes they would like run them to, you know, a considerable amount of years. I remember when Art Wood was here, that's one of the things he always talked about.
Yeah, we have.
I haven't really looked at it, so I'm just assuming that. Maybe that's the question.
We have excellent mechanics. I think that allows us to have the average age fleet that we do have of twelve years. Uh, the spares that we've sold over the past couple of years, we've, I don't know, run them in the ground is the best uh uh. Way to describe it, but these are buses that, you know, fifteen, twenty years old with a couple hundred thousand miles on them and these are well-used buses that. Are well past their useful life at that point in time. Those are the spares that we sell. We don't put them on the road. Uh, we we sell those off. But it it's time to address the fleet. There's no question about it. That that average age concerns me a little bit and the fact that we haven't purchased any. Uh, we did purchase ten, it was ten buses, it was a combination of wheelchair buses and small buses back in two thousand. Fourteen, I believe, uh, two thousand fifteen, I believe it was. That was the last purchase that we made, so it's been over two years. Okay, the re- retirement expense, even though we had good news that it came in less than expected. We are adding two million dollars to the expenditure side of the budget. That would be the gross expense, one million dollars net after the subsidy, two million dollars. Added to the budget. But we're excited by that because that's the lowest number in like nine years. That's the lowest number, so. Yeah, before you start out, anything in the budget, we add a a three million dollar ongoing deficit. And add in two million dollars in pension obligation on the expenditure side, one million dollar net. So. Before you talk about anything else, we really were at a four million dollar hole before we got involved with anything else in the budget. So let's talk about that retirement rate. Uh, it pains me to share this chart each year, but I do. Uh, Mr. Shoney alluded to this. If you go back to two thousand, two thousand one and take a look at the retirement rate, how that's progressed. Over the number of years, it's absolutely staggering. Uh, in the two thousand one, two year, the rate was about one percent. So we paid one cent on the dollar for any eligible salaries for the pension obligation and now next year we're paying uh thirty-three percent. It's absolutely incredible how that's grown and part of that is because of kicking the can down the road. It was clear when the internet bubble burst and we had a recession in the early two thousands, nine nine eleven included. With that, the resulting tumbling of the stock market for a couple of years. It was already known in the two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand four year that something had to be done with pension. Uh, but that can kept getting kicked down the road. We had a second recession in the late two thousand. The two thousands, the can kept getting kicked down the road and now we're paying the price for pushing off. The expense when it should have been addressed many, many years ago. And that's why the rate is as high as it is. Right, I think it's clear.
Perfectly clear, it's not the North Penn School District.
Exactly.
Uh, uh, and reiterate that so people see that.
And let's reiterate too that this isn't a teacher problem, this isn't administrator problem, this isn't a staff problem. We we don't set the rate. We, meaning. The school district, public educators, teachers, we don't set the rate. Every employee that's eligible for a pension pays a percentage out of his or her paycheck. Either six and a half percent or seven and a half percent, or for newer employees, even a higher percent out of their paycheck for their contribution to piecers. The employer pays a contribution. That's the rate that we're talking about here, thirty-three point four three percent next year. That rate is set by the piecers board. We have no control on that. The only thing we can do is pay that amount. Pay that amount. And if we don't pay it, it'll just be deducted from our account. Uh, Pennsylvania Department of Education will just come in and take the money from us or withhold subsidies. So it's not like you can protest and not pay the money. You have to pay the money. So this problem wasn't created by teachers. It wasn't created by. In my opinion, anyone other than those individuals that felt it was wise at the time to postpone the inevitable.
See, just out of curiosity, why haven't the gains in the market over the last ten years had a bigger influence on that? If it was so low. In two thousand because of the success of the market, why has that not been reflected in this without a long explanation?
Well, there there've been, yeah.
But I'm curious.
Ten seconds.
I can, I can summarize it real quickly. Without the stock market gains in the last four years in particular, the numbers would be a lot worse. They have mitigated.
That's frightening.
They have mitigated the increase.
Mr. Schilling, I think you have bipartisan support that we need to make Harrisburg.
Well, I mean, to that point though, if. E- even though there's the projections are to be stable over the next few years, if there was a large. Uh, retraction in the market, would that have a big influence then on what those projections are?
It would. If if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the last bar on the chart, that's thirty-six point three two percent.
Yeah.
So that doesn't seem like, well, we're not that far away from the plateau and that part is true, so that part is good. The only downside of that is that rate will probably stay there for about the next twenty years. And even if you have abnormal returns in the stock market, let's say ten to fifteen percent piecers earnings per year. That maybe will shave a half a percent or a percent off each year. And you need to sustain gains like that over a long period of time to shave that amount off. So the piecers return this past year. Uh, was ten point one four percent. Their. Actuarial assumption is closer to seven percent. So they outperformed, you know, quite nicely. Ten percent they earned, they projected seven percent. So. That was the reason why instead of thirty-four percent for the upcoming year, it was only thirty-three percent. But to expect ten percent gains every year, each and every year, i- it's just not sustainable. Their seven percent average is probably a good historical average. There'll be some years where it's a two percent gain or some years will be a negative gain, it'll be a loss. Or three percent. So seven percent is what they use for their actuarial assumptions.
So this, this, I'm sorry, this will be, wow, I'm close. Um, this will be my last question, I think, on this, because I don't want to get too much in the weeds, because I know this was just basically your view and the Finance Committee will actually get into it. Um, but this, this obviously came up a lot even during the election. This, this was the biggest thing that we talked about on the finance side, because we're getting crunched and there is bipartisan support. Nobody at this table likes the fact that there's a giant doom bar on the end of the thing eating up our budget. But it's a sunk cost. We're, we're, we're dealing with it. But are, what are our options or? Will, will, will we be able to get into actionable items that we as a board? Can do to help offset those costs or to deal with possible retractions that may occur?
Let's talk about offsetting the cost. That gets back to that committed fund balance for piecers, sixteen million dollars. That's, that's really important. Because that will help mitigate the increases between now and the plateau in four years. The committed fund balance for piecers, yes. So that was, again, that was well planned, well thought out. And if we start pulling down from that piece of the committed fund balance, that will help bridge the gap. To get us to the point where we will see a completely leveled off. Situation where we're not going to have an increase or possibly maybe a half a percent or a percent lower than it was the previous year. So. We do have a plan in place. We'll share that with the Finance Committee and that's what really will help bridge the gap. Now, speaking on a more global basis, legislatively, I think some actions have been taken over the last couple of years. Uh, so we had some changes in two thousand ten for new employees that were hired then. And there's been some changes that will take effect for next year for new employees that are hired to have a combination. Approach of a defined benefit, defined contribution plan. approach of a defined benefit, defined contribution plan. So more of the risk is going to be borne by new employees. That takes so many years though to work its way through the system. So that's why I said it's probably going to take a good twenty years before we get back to more reasonable numbers. And, you know, maybe the ten to fifteen percent range instead of the thirty-plus percent range. So let's take a look at retirement in terms of the gross dollars on the expenditure side, how that's grown. So in the upcoming year, our, in our eighteen, nineteen budget, we have an incredible amount, over forty million dollars in our budget for, just for retirement. Uh, to be precise, it's forty-one point seven million dollars. We have thirty-nine point seven million dollars in this year's budget. So go back to ten, eleven, go back those eight years. We're at roughly six million dollars in the budget. So to go from six million dollars in retirement to forty-one million dollars in eight short years is just absolutely incredible. And it's devastated many school districts. So again, we were very, very fortunate to have the fund balance that we have, to have the committed funds that we have, to be able to bridge the gap between now and the total plateau. The other part that's staggering is when you take a look at retirement as a percent of the total budget. Less than three percent eight years ago, and the upcoming year will be sixteen percent of the entire budget will be borne just from the retirement expense. Okay, moving on to some other uh, drivers in the eighteen, nineteen budget. Our salary increases are three point two million dollars. We do have contracts in place with our labor agreements now, so these are basically known numbers. So I mentioned that we did shed a lease in technology that was for teacher laptops. We also are moving forward with another year of our digital initiative, our one-to-one initiative with the purchase of Chromebooks and some other infrastructure for three grade levels for the upcoming year. And just to let you know, we are going to be doing departmental level uh, presentations at finance committee meetings. We did that approach last year. So our technology director, for example, will come in and do a presentation on the technology budget. We'll get in a lot more detail what makes up the technology budget. But the digital initiative is driving out one point five million dollars in new spending next year. And that's an outright purchase, that's not a lease. If we decide at some point through the process to do a three-year lease, obviously that would cut that one point five million dollars down to five hundred thousand dollars. And that was a strategy that was used in the past to help mitigate any kind of budget increases, to try to come close to a balanced budget. Do a lease as opposed to an outright purchase. With a lease though, you're borrowing money. When you borrow money, you pay a cost for that. You pay an interest cost. Our charter school tuition is projected to go up uh, about a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars next year. And our diesel fuel for our buses, sixty thousand dollars. And you might have noted today that uh, oil, the price of oil hit a three-year high today. So we are expects, expecting to pay at least a dollar a gallon more for diesel than we did last year. Uh, last year, we think we pretty much came close to a bottom in diesel. Uh, I think we're paying like a dollar twenty or a dollar thirty in our bid price for diesel this year. So we're probably going to have to up that sixty thousand dollars, the way oil has gone the last couple of weeks and might have to add in um, maybe another sixty thousand dollars for the diesel fuel. Okay, a couple unknowns. One of the downsides of doing a preliminary budget, basically we started this process in November, finished it up before the holidays. You're, you're only three or four months into the, to the budget year and you're figuring out what you're going to spend already for the next fiscal year. So you have a lot of unknowns when you do the first draft. As we get closer to the final budget adoption in June, many, many items become more clear. But the major items that are unknown at this point are from the state level and the federal level. We have no idea what we're looking at at the state budget. So we put in two percent for our basic instructional subsidy and our special education subsidy. Those are two of our larger subsidies that we receive from the Department of Education. So we're continuing to assume for the first draft, two percent, or we'll certainly hope for more. If we find out that we might be receiving more, we will change the budget and put those numbers in. And the same goes for federal funding as well. Also, the unknown, I mentioned this earlier, we have no idea at this point how many retirements we might have, but we know that once we receive them, we will update the budget and lower the expenditure. Uh, for teacher retirement, we typically uh, look at forty thousand dollars in savings per teacher. Also staffing changes. I know there'll be some discussion at the ECP committee, class size discussions and other discussions regarding the possibility of having some staffing impact changes, depending on some of those discussions. So any kind of changes with staffing additions and so forth would have to be added in the budget. Another lar- large item in the budget is one point two million dollars for workers' compensation. We have a zero percent increase added in for that. We don't know what that number is yet, but we budgeted that at zero percent. So let's talk about the tax scenarios. I think this question was asked before about, well, how much would the one point seven million dollars for the special education exception generate? So let's start at, at zero percent. We mentioned earlier that at zero percent, the deficit would be nine point seven million dollars. That would be a zero percent increase for the average homestead property. So various iterations from one percent up to two point four percent. At two point four percent, the Act One Index, that would generate an additional four point one million dollars in real estate taxes. That would leave a deficit of five million, five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. That would be eighty-seven dollar, eighty-seven dollar increase to the average homeowner in the school district. So if you add in the one point seven million dollars for the special education exception, that would allow a maximum tax increase of three point three eight percent. That would be the maximum that the board seeks and uses the special education exception. That would generate a total of five point eight million dollars in additional revenue. So additional one point seven million dollars would be added to the four point one million dollars, leaving a remaining deficit of three point eight million dollars. And that would be a one hundred twenty-three dollar increase to the average homestead property. So one of the things we try to do with the first draft of the budget, we try to be very conservative. So we try to present the first draft of the budget being a worst-case scenario. So we fully expect that nine point seven million dollar deficit, as new information comes in, that that number will decrease. Now, that doesn't account for any additions that might occur, but when you net everything out, we fully expect the nine point seven million dollars would go down. Especially if nothing else for the retirements. That's nearly a million dollars right there with the retirements. And one of the things we do be, really, every day, as new information comes in, we update the budget. We also have about eight thousand line items in the budget. Uh, now that we have a first draft, we go through line item by line item to make sure, well, number one, there's no keying error. Um, and number two, just to make sure everything uh, makes sense, that the projections make sense, that, you know, perhaps we need to sharpen the pencil on some items. We do that for every line item in the budget. We'll also have discussion with the finance committee about use of that stabilization fund. So if the decision is made to use, for example, two million dollars in the stabilization fund for next year, then that deficit, you know, really is not nine point seven million dollars, it's seven point seven million dollars if you use the deficit. But you have to be careful about the structural, the ongoing piece of it. Staffing recommendations will be an important part. Uh, we'll include five-year, uh, multi-year uh, projections as part of the budget process, where we can do different modeling. We can say, well, what, what if we do a two point four percent increase, or what if we do a three percent increase? Has that affect future years? Um, and also, again, just to reiterate, we will refine and update the data based on new information. We'll continue to do that all the way up through the beginning of June. So again, the, the next steps at this point in time, uh, unless the board has discussion tonight or next Thursday night decides to pass a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index, we will march forward with presentation for your consideration of applying for Act One exceptions. Again, applying for is the key. It doesn't mean that they will ever be used. Uh, historically here in North Penn School District, with the exception of last year, exceptions were applied for in previous years. They were never utilized though. Exceptions were applied for, but they were never utilized. That decision can occur later. That decision can occur in May for the proposed final budget or June for the final budget. So the decision point really is made by next Thursday, based on action or inaction about the uh, application for the Act One exceptions. So our schedule, again, we do have a action meeting next Thursday, the eighteenth. We have special finance committee on February first, and we have the regular finance committee meeting on January twenty-second. And we'll get into more detail. Tonight again was meant to be a first blush. And we'll probably double or triple the amount of information on the twenty seconds meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schrocky. I remember you last year during the budget discussion saying that this year in particular was of, of big concern to you. So it's nice to see you have some good things to talk about tonight. Yeah.
Not all dark cloud for once, right?
No, so um, thank you and thank you to your staff for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
And a good sense of humor too.
Any questions? Anything else? I am. Boston Marathon in April. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, with that, I know that there was public comment that Mrs. Montgomery wanted to make, right? Um, and I appreciate your patience tonight and all of you back there, um, who have been waiting so, what, like three hours now? So, um, in light of the late hour, we'll let, allow the public comment, but if you could bear in mind that it is, um, that we want to keep it to maybe five minutes per commenter, I would really appreciate that. I'm sure everybody else would too. Thank you.
I'll keep it short, I promise. Uh, my name's uh, Cassie Montgomery, uh, nineteen nineteen South Broad Street in Lansdale. And I'm a sophomore at North Penn High School. First, I want to recognize the rapid response by the curriculum department to the concerns I raised about a health assignment that normalized rape. For more than five years, sophomores at North Penn have been taught Alligator River. This assignment was intended to guide students through their examination of their personal values by asking us to judge and rank characters from best to worst in a scenario. The problem with this scenario is not okay. This is because instead of providing clear moral and ethical choices, it asked us to judge a woman who needed to cross a river in order to do so, in order to do so, she was coerced into sex. And all non-consensual sex, including sex in which quarry, cor- coro- I can't say that word. Corrosion, yep, is involved is rape, hundred percent of the time. This scenario normalized rape, shamed and silenced victims and failed to recognize a violent crime as a crime. When we fail to identify rape as a crime, fail to identify those who commit rape as rapists and those who are victimized as victims, we perpen- we perpetuate rape culture. Of more concern to me, this is more concern to me is the impact on my fellow students. It is never acceptable to judge and shame victims. Among my classmates, there are already victims and witnesses, and there will be more tomorrow. I saw my classmates walk away with the idea that rape is sometimes not rape. That victim shaming is okay and stopping sexual assault isn't our job. We need to be clear that rape is never okay, even if someone needs a ride or you do them a favor. Doesn't matter what they're wearing or what other decisions they previously made, sexual assault is never the fault of the victim. And it's everyone's responsibility to prevent sexual violence. I want to applaud the district for taking my complaint seriously and modifying Alligator River to a point where it can no longer make excuses for something we should all agree is not okay. However, it is important to note that merely removing this one assignment is not enough. The North Penn School District does not currently have a comprehensive K through twelve program to prevent sexual violence. Such program could not have existed side by side with Alligator River. The solution is to look at all programs across the country and reach out to local and state experts on rape, such as the ones I brought today, Laurel House and Victim Services. I invite every person in the room to pick up a flyer and pick up a sticker and bracelet at the, at the back of the room. And I'm asking you, what will you do to prevent sexual violence in our community?
Sounds like a topic for safe schools.
Yeah, safe schools and ECP for the healthcare curriculum.
Yep, th- thank you very much for uh, for, for those comments and bringing it to, to the board's attention, but also the communities. So uh, you should really be commended for that and thanks for standing up.
Hi, my name is Anne Montgomery, and I do want to say sometimes we have to learn our lessons as adults from children. So I'm very proud of my daughter for being willing to come forward. Um, I also live at nineteen nineteen South Broad Street. I'd like to congratulate the recently elected members of the school board and look forward to a new era of transparency and cooperation on issues important to the education of our children. I'm the parent of a high school sophomore at North Penn and a former federal law enforcement official. It is in both capacities that I address you today. I first learned of Alligator River assignment before Thanksgiving, when my daughter informed me of the class discussion that ensued as a result of that assignment. North Penn is not the only district that has used or is using this assignment. But we have the opportunity to publicly address why it should never, ever be taught to any student at any level in the state of Pennsylvania. As a former federal law enforcement official, I know that we have caused real harm to victims and the witnesses of sexual assault in our classrooms through this assignment. Forcing victims surrounded by their peers to relive their assault, shaming them into continued silence and for these victims, as well as for those who have not yet been victimized, discouraging them from reporting crimes or stepping forward as witnesses. This directly impacts the ability of law enforcement to investigate crimes of sexual violence in our community by calling a felon, a felony, an amorous encounter, as the assignment does. We normalize sexual assault and perpetuate the idea that judging victims is socially and legally acceptable. None of this should be the intent or the impact of what we do um, in any educational setting. The statistics on sexual assault need to inform what we do in this school district. Here's what we know, according to the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Rape, the Centers for Disease Control, the National Center for Victims of Crime, and the National Sexual Violence Resource Center. Sixty four, sorry, sixty-four percent of sexual assaults are never reported to the police. And only twelve percent of child sex abuse is reported. One in four girls and one in six boys will be sexually abused before the age of eighteen. Of those victims, seventy-three percent do not tell anyone about the abuse for at least a year. Forty-five percent do not tell anyone for five years. Children are the most vulnerable between the ages of seven and thirteen. Twelve point three percent of girls and over twenty-seven percent of boys were first raped when they were ten or younger. This is why K through twelve prevention programs are absolutely critical. But we must also look at those who commit sexual assault. Studies reveal many are juveniles. It is estimated that adolescents between thirteen and seventeen accounted up to one-fifth of rape and one-half of all cases of child molestation committed each year. Most adults who perpetuate sexual offenses have been doing so since they were adolescents. The solution to this problem is already underway. The district, district curriculum coordinator for high school health has modified the assignment. Has held a meeting with Victim Services and the High School Health Teaching Staff in December and scheduled programs that will begin this spring. There is an, an existing productive relationship between the district and Laurel House. Now, both agencies are working together to coordinate with our district. These developments are important and significant. However, they are not a substitute for adopting a comprehensive research-based K through twelve program to prevent sexual violence. And that is what I'm here to ask for today. For each member of this board, a wholeheartedly support, a review of what best practice programs exist for K through twelve education, to identify the gaps we have in our curriculum and to fill those gaps. An immediate integration of the programs offered by Victim Services to all children, K through twelve, is a revenue-neutral proposition. And an appropriate response while the review is conducted. We have asked the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Rape to provide written testimony, which has been provided to the president of the board. And we've also asked Victim Services and Laurel House, who I also invite to come give very brief testimony in person today on what best practice programs look like and how we can continue to move forward in the best interests of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Montgomery.
I wanted to thank you all for having us today. I am Lydia Lines, the Community Education Coordinator at Laurel House. Laurel House is a domestic violence agency that serves all of Montgomery County. We are located at one eighty West German Town Pike in East Norrington. I wanted to extend a thank you to the school board for allowing us to speak today, as well as to the school district in general and the Health Curriculum Coordinator for being so diligent in the matter of removing the Alligator River lesson. We applaud the work of the school and ask them to continue their diligent work in building a comprehensive domestic and sexual violence program. Laurel House and North Penn School District have had a long history together. In the past few years, Laurel House has presented our Healthy Relationships presentations to students. We have also collaborated with students on projects to combat dating abuse. We look forward to continuing our work together and in reaching more North Penn community members. Our Healthy Relationships and Friendship Fundamental Programs are currently in over twenty public and private high schools across Montgomery County. Last year alone, we reached about twenty-five hundred students. The programs are aligned with national and state educational standards, fitting alongside the curriculum that students already learn in the classrooms. The presentations are, are typically conducted in health classes during each new semester. From the one-day or two-day trainings, students are able to create a framework for maintaining healthy relationships. Our trainings are very interactive and students role-play through conflict resolution scenarios to practice how they would respond to an abusive situation. We are also working towards an evidence-based review of these programs and have students complete a brief survey at the end of the presentations. The programs address gender norms within dating and talk about the impact dating abuse has on teens. The programs address gender norms within dating and talk about the impact dating abuse has on teens. Students learn about the importance of boundaries, physical, mental, and sexual, as well as how to differentiate between healthy, unhealthy, and abusive relationships. Through interactive activities, students discuss dating scenarios and how they would respond. We talk about the various forms of abuse and teach students the warning signs and patterns of an unhealthy relationship. Our programs also help students respond appropriately to situations where abuse is occurring. Students practice bystander interventions and role-play how to help a friend who is in an unhealthy or abusive relationship. We also provide students with strategies on how to successfully confront a friend who may be abusive. Although our programs do help students build a framework for creating and maintaining healthy relationships, they are not inclusive of sexual boundaries. Our programs do not cover important topics such as consent, intimate sexual boundaries, and sexual assault prevention. We do not talk about the prevalence of sexual assault, sexual harassment, or its implications on teens. We know however, that thousands of students nationwide experience sexual assault and sexual harassment every year. The education that students receive should provide them with information on how to respond appropriately in these situations. That's where Victim Services comes into play. Their prevention education curriculum will provide that comprehensive approach to understanding the dynamics and prevalence of sexual violence for students. Laurel House, along with Victim Services, are advocating today for a collaborative, comprehensive prevention education program to, to better equip the students at North Penn. We asked that the school board and the Health Curriculum Coordinator implement a comprehensive SVDV approach to North Penn's health classes as soon as next semester. We know that with prevention, the elimination of violence is possible. It is time that we proper, properly educate our youth and provide them with the tools to adequately recognize and prevent all forms of violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia, for coming out tonight. And thank you for your patience. We really do appreciate it. Um, I respectfully suggest that you guys maybe come back to the ECP committee meetings and to the Safe Schools committee meetings and to present your thoughts, okay, and then your information. Thank you. Is, this will be the, I think, the last comment of the night, okay? All right, thank you.
Yes, um, so, my name is Jessica Hayman. I am with Victim Services Center for Montgomery County. Um, we are located on three twenty-five Sweet Street in Norristown. We are the County Rape Crisis Center. We were founded in the seventies, um, and since then have expanded our um practice so that we serve victims of all types of violent crime. Um, we provide comprehensive and confidential services uh that range from serving victims directly in the hospital when they've been a victim of a sexual assault, to going to the police station, going to court, um, and providing counseling, and really kind of see the whole process. In addition to providing those services after someone has been a victim of a crime, we really believe that it's so important to be proactive about this. Um, you know, they've given you statistics already. I'm not gonna reiterate those for you. But what I will tell you is that the CDC, um, the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Rape, the National Sexual Violence Resource Center, all are giving us the same information about how we can prevent these crimes. What they're telling us is that the best way to prevent these crimes is with these comprehensive primary prevention, um, meaning uh trying to prevent first-time perpetration, um, and teaching kids to be assertive. Um, those kind of programs are what they're telling us based on the evidence is the best way to try to prevent this type of violence. Um, we currently uh provide programs for preschool-age students through college-age students. Um, all dedicated towards ending sexual violence in our community. Um, with the younger kids that might look like teaching them what is a safe touch versus what is an unsafe touch. Um, it's not as scary as it seems. I think a lot of people get scared off by the idea of teaching child sexual abuse prevention to preschoolers. Um, and it's, it's not necessarily about that. It's more about teaching students what boundaries are and how to be respectful in their interactions with other people, and how to be assertive and stand up for yourself. And who can you go to if someone is touching you in an unsafe way? Um, we incorporate these practices in our bullying prevention programs. Um, and we work closely with Laurel House on their dating violence prevention programs because we think that a comprehensive approach is the best and most effective way to keep our students safe and to end violence. Um, a lot of communities, I think, are fearful to talk about sexual abuse in general. Um, it's a scary topic. It's not fun or exciting. But I think that the reality is, and what we've seen, um, especially in the last year in our country, is that this is a really huge problem. The CDC has declared that child sexual abuse and sexual abuse in general are both epidemic-level problems in our country. And I can tell you from working with schools in Montgomery County and speaking with the kids and doing direct service work, I know that that's the case. So, just because you're not seeing it firsthand doesn't mean that it's not happening. I think people that spoke before me spoke to the fact that these crimes are wildly under-reported. Um, so the idea is that hopefully with these programs, we can help to prevent these crimes. Um, and for the students who have already been victimized, we can help them to stand up for themselves and access services. So, I would invite you guys to take any materials. I'm happy to speak with anyone. Um, but I really think that you guys have an important role in this because the, these kind of programs, teachers can try their best to implement them, um, but you guys have a lot of power to inspire the schools specifically or specific administrators or teachers even to bring these programs in because we're offering them for free. Um, we just have to have the opportunity to come and provide the children with that education. So, I really commend you guys for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information.
And, and I'll keep it even briefer. So, uh, thank you very much. And, and this is an issue that's been discussed before, and I, I uh, not speaking for the board, but feel that there's a, you know, unanimous dedication, so to speak, to making sure we address these issues. Uh, it came up uh prior. There's absolutely uh partnership and collaboration that we'd like to have to my fellow board members who aren't aware of these organizations. Uh, I, I'm a, a board member for Network of Victim Assistance of Bucks County and can speak towards the high level of quality. Um, not only in the state of Pennsylvania, but nationwide for the experts that are here today. So, to have your offer, uh, to be able to make a difference, think that this does tie in with safe schools and ECP as we've discussed uh preliminarily, looking at uh campus uh climate surveys of, of schools, also realizing uh victimology and response when it comes down to our administration and some studies that have come out in the last two months. There's been some research on the ability for school leadership to respond properly, but also make sure that we're receptive to hearing from victims and properly dealing with that. The downside, it's come out in uh Banger, PA, a few weeks ago. There was a lawsuit that was settled. Uh, OCR's investigating Penridge School District. So, there are not only moral, ethical compliance issues, there's real risk management that we as a district, uh, and as, as a board can uh explore further. So, uh, in, in the months ahead and hopefully years, we'll continue to make gains and work in partnership.
Great, thank you again. And thank you to everybody for uh sticking with us tonight. It is a, a record-long meeting, I think. So, what? No, it's not a record? Well, it's a, it's a, it's a, okay, all right. We'll, we'll see if we can break it next week. Okay, I do have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you. Um, the next meeting is, what, the eighteenth? Action meeting is January eighteenth, next Thursday.